Ready? Ready? Call to order. Welcome to the regular board meeting of Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, March 31st. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. Trustees, be reminded to turn off your microphone and camera on your devices until you're recognized to speak. In order to be recognized to speak, please type "hand up" in the chat box. Once you've been recognized, please turn on your microphone and camera. Agenda item one, opening prayer and national anthem and oath of citizenship. Trustee Keratau, will you please lead us in the opening exercise?
Of course, Mr. Chair. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in Father and Son and Holy Spirit. Amen. Jesus, during your ministry on earth, you showed your power and compassion by healing people of all ages and stations of life from physical, mental, and spiritual ailments. Be present now to people who need your loving touch because of COVID-19. May they feel your power of healing through the care of doctors and nurses. Take away the fear, anxiety, and feelings of isolation from people receiving treatment or under quarantine. Give them a sense of purpose in pursuing health and protecting others from exposure to the disease. Protect their families and friends and bring peace to all who love them. In the name of Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I affirm that I would be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada, her heirs and successors, and I will faithfully observe the laws of Canada and fulfill my duties. Vice Chair Durt, please read the motions adopted in camera and the information received.
Mr. Chair, motions adopted in camera. The following motions was adopted in camera. Result that the Halton Catholic District School Board ratified the central terms contained with the memorandum of settlement and attached appendices dated March 12th, 2020, made between the Ontario Catholic School Trustees Association and the Ontario English Catholic Teachers Association and agreed to by the Crown. Further, that the approval of the ratification of the central terms be reported to OCSTA. Information received in camera. The following information was received in camera. Retirements. Roseanne Matiachi retiring effective March 31st, 2020. Adriana Lubric, Sandra Patterson, and Janice Peralt retiring effective June 30th, 2020. Marjorie MacArthur retiring effective July 3rd, 2020. Academic appointments. Jodi O'Reilly appointed as special education coordinator effective September 1st, 2020 for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. Anita Batter reappointed as special education consultant effective September 1st, 2020 for a period of up to three years with the possibility of a one-year extension. To you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Sorry, go ahead.
Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Do we have anybody? All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Carabella, seconded by? Trustee Guzzo. I will now take a vote. Trustee Durt.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Sorry, is this approval of agenda? May I make, I had something to say. Sorry, I skipped that.
All right, so we'll go back. So are there, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to make a point of order to the agenda items, to action item 8.3, that it be placed as a discussion item or an information item, so to be respect our bylaws point number 9.6, which states that any trustee may request that an item other than an action item be placed upon the agenda, and the trustee shall give seven days' notice of such proposed agenda items in writing to the secretary. The secretary and the chair may, in their discretion, add such proposed agenda items to the agenda. So they're talking about all agenda items except action items.
Do you have a second there? To your point of order. O'Brien, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Any discussion on this matter?
Perhaps, through you, Mr. Chair, it's trustee Agnew. Perhaps you could just give an explanation as to why it was placed as an action item?
So it was my doing, trustees. I decided that the section that trustee Carabella used, that there is another section in there, and if there is an emergency element to it, then the chair has, in conjunction with the director, has the right to call and put something on the agenda as an action item, or any of the, whether it be information delegations, miscellaneous, and so on. I chose to use the portion of that particular, of our bylaws whereby I deemed it to be an emergency. I believe that mental health is an emergency. We've spent much time on that particular topic, and I felt that due to the wellness and the well-being of our young ladies, that that item warranted being an action item. And then we could amend it down the line to deal with if there is any other qualifications that you wish to add to it. So it was my doing. So I'll open it as a discussion item. Is there any other? Anybody else wish to have the floor? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I respect the discussion and the topic, but I was just bringing attention that we should be careful about using the bylaws as they are for us and to not, try not to do exceptions. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Actually, actually trustee Durt's next.
Okay. According to my, okay, trustee Durt, can you please?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is an important matter. It involves, it involves some budgeting. It involves, maybe involves some liabilities. It's an important topic, a very important topic. I would think it would, I mean, we all probably will support that, but I think that I'm just thinking whether we should warrant a little more discussion on this topic and then bring it to action item. It can always be done that way, so I don't see a problem doing it either way.
Any other, trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate, thank you for the explanation, and at the end of the day, even if it was to go on as an information item, a motion can always be brought forward. I don't think we're circumventing any of the bylaws. That is something that is allowed with the chair, is the chair can actually schedule it, so I will follow your lead. It's not a contentious issue. It's not a political issue by any means, so I don't see any problem with it being left the way it is.
Any other discussion? Any? No other discussion? I will then take it to a vote. Do we have, can I have a motion? Can somebody move to accept it, the agenda as it is?
Trustee Swan has his hand up, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I can't see it. So trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Hang on, so I just want to clarify. So 8.3 will now be moving as a discussion item instead, or will it be left as is?
So we're going to be taking a vote on it? We've only got a second there. We're discussing it, after which time we take a vote of whether to accept trustee Carabella's motion or point of order?
Okay.
Anybody else? So you need a second? Trustee DeRosa.
Yeah, I've lost the images, but you can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is, this is no question a very important item, but I would emphasize that we follow the proper procedure and put it in as a discussion item or an information item, because we'd like to benefit from at least some factual information and maybe in the form of a, of a staff report that could look into this matter so that we can make an informed factual decision.
Is there any more discussion on this item? If there is no other discussion, trustee Carabella has a motion on the floor. It's been seconded by trustee Guzzo. Oh, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
It's okay, I was just, it's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that.
Okay. So as I said, we had a motion by trustee Carabella. We had a second to move this agenda item into information. I will now take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Keratau.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Durt.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Zernot, O'Hearn Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Okay, so the motion, it's a four-four, so I get to, no, it can't be four-four, huh? The trustees, student trustees?
That's not a four-four.
No, it's not a four-four.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. So agenda item, action item 8.3 moves to information under agenda item or information item 10.10. Okay. So may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee O'Brien, seconded by trustee Carabella. All in favor? Motion carries. Agenda item number three, declarations of conflicts. Are there declarations of conflicts? There is no declaration of conflicts. Agenda item four, and agenda item four, there's no business there, so I will move to agenda item six, approval of the minutes of March 3rd, 2020, regular board meeting. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to go through the way that the minutes are recording the motions six, number 60, 61, and 62. They're missing the seconder on each of those motions, and the numbers don't add up to a failed or, I think the motions all failed, but they, we have to go and look at it because I don't have it on my screen, because I need it on the big screen here. So, yes, it doesn't say who that motion was seconded by, each of those three motions.
Yeah, that's correct.
And I don't remember who seconded them, so it might need a little bit of research.
So, so trustee Carabella, if I hear you right, are you asking that we amend those minutes? If so, then we're going to have to defer it until such time as we figure out what the voting was on those particular items?
Certainly, then I would, would do that, that they become complete.
Would you move to defer, would you move to defer approval of the minutes of March 3rd, 2020, regular board meeting?
Yes, I will move to defer those minutes.
Can I have a second there?
I'll second that.
Trustee, trustee DeRosa. All in favor? Or would you rather I call a vote?
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote? Okay. Trustee DeRosa, you're in favor. Student trustee Keratau?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Durt?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Motion carries. This matter will be deferred to the next board meeting.
Point of order, I wasn't asked, Vince, Mr. Chair. Janet O'Hearn, Chairnote, I didn't get to vote.
I did. I must have been muted. I did ask you. Trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
Yeah, in favor.
Thank you. Motion carries. The approval of the March 3rd, 2020, regular board meeting will be moved to the next board meeting. Business arising from the previous meetings, a list of items is provided for information. Moving on to action items, action item 8.1, school calendar. Superintendent Crowell, do you wish to speak to this before I read the motion?
Very briefly. Through you, Mr. Chair, and please present the action report on the school year calendar for 2020, 2021. As mentioned in the report, this calendar was created by all stakeholders under school year calendar committee and done in collaboration with our co-chairmentist board. Representing this as an action item and asking you to approve the 2020, 2021 school year calendar, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have questions?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Point of clarification, Superintendent Crowell, is, is the approval of this item mandated or timed with the new collective agreement as a, as an obligation to do this by a certain time?
Our obligation, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, our obligation is to have the calendar to the ministry for approval by May 1st. We're trying to time this with the public board and also being mindful that because the calendar looks so different this year, we want to have it out to the public as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Well, any other questions? Yes, who's that? Trustee Guzzo.
Okay.
You have the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought there was other people in front of me, but I might be losing track here. So I just have a question through you, Mr. Chair. Seeing that we don't have to have it submitted by May 1st, and given the climate of everything that's going on right now, would it be beneficial not to rush through this and maybe take a step back and see how the next couple of weeks unfold?
With regards to the next couple of weeks, like I said, our intention is we would like to release this sort of with the public board as they're releasing their calendar. We're going to be submitting it at the same time. The sense is that if the school year was to be impacted, the ministry would allow us to make some changes to the calendar, but we'd like to be as proactive as possible by getting this to the ministry.
So just to follow up to that, are you saying the public board has already passed it and has submitted it?
Correct.
So we know this for a fact?
They, at their last board meeting, it was approved. I've been in contact with the associate director, and he's confirmed that.
Okay, and so that being said, though, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to do it at the same time. It's just a something that we might have done in the past.
I think the reason why we would like to do it at the same time is because it will be made public through the press. We typically do it as a joint, sort of joint press release, and we'd like, we would like to keep to that practice, I believe.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry, I've got my hand up. Trustee DeRosa.
Trustee, trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So Superintendent Crowell, just, I guess, another, just kind of quick question on that piece. In the event that there has to be a change to the calendar, you know, start dates might change, given the current climate that we're in, is that just something that we would deal with, you know, as per ministry direction, if that's a decision that they make? And if so, is there a preamble that will go out with this calendar? Because I imagine that once we publish this calendar under this environment, we're probably going to get some questions from parents on how accurate or how concrete this calendar might be, given what's going on.
So when we publish, when we make our press release, we are always saying it's pending sort of final approval from the ministry. We certainly work with the ministry, with our co-chairmentist partners, to make sure that we are being mindful of what might come, and if we were to get direction from the ministry to make changes to the calendar, we would certainly do so.
Okay. Thank you.
No other questions? There's no other questions? So can I have a mover to, to, to move this matter?
I can move.
Trustee Durt, seconded by?
What's the motion, Mr. Chair?
Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, I will now call a vote.
Right, hands up.
Mr. Chair, there's, trustee Guzzo has a question.
Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to amend the resolution to postpone, or actually, I would like to postpone this resolution at this time.
All right, do I have a second there for that motion? Tim O'Brien, our trustee O'Brien. All in favor? Or would you like a recorded vote?
Yes.
All right, recorded vote. Trustee DeRosa.
Is the motion to delay the decision?
Yeah, so the motion that you have in front of you now is to defer this matter to a later date.
Opposed.
Trust, student trustee Keratau?
Abstain.
Trustee Carabella has her hand up.
My apologies, I can't see anything here, so I'm relying on people feeding me information. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. I did put my hand up before you started the vote, because I certainly, I don't know if I'm okay now to just ask a question, and the voting has started.
So no, we can go back. I will go back, so let's, let's start it again. Do you have, do you want to discuss this item, or do you have a question?
Discuss the amendment, because it's being postponed, but I was wondering if there's a date to when it's postponed, and I had another question would be if it gets passed and then needs to be changed for whatever reason, how easy is it to change?
Trustee Carabella, can you propose a date?
Well, I mean, May 1st, it needs to be in the ministry, but I don't know what, if really waiting the extra two or three weeks at this point would make a difference to the May 1st. No, Superintendent Crowell might speak to that, and also the question was if we approve it and then it needs to be changed, how easy is that to change?
Trust, our superintendent Crowell, can you address?
Sure. My feeling is this, if, if we're happy with the calendar the way it looks for next year, my feeling would be the earlier we get it to the ministry for feedback, the earlier we can make any changes that they're proposing and share them with, with the public. It gives us more time to make changes as opposed to waiting, but that's my feeling.
And, and what date could it be delayed to?
We have a hard date of May 1st, according to the last communication we received from the ministry at the end of February, and that's in line with the dates for previous years.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I would just then add to my amendment to say that we revisit it in two weeks, given that we just received an announcement that the school year is going to, we're not looking at going back anyways, until May 1st for teachers, I believe it said, and May 4th for students, as things are changing drastically on a daily basis. And at this point, I don't think people are even looking at what's, what's going to happen next year. They're looking at what's happening today and next week, and I think, you know what, it would just give us a little bit more flexibility if we're, you know, if changes have to come, I think it would be easier for us to make the change before we announce it to the public than having to do it after the fact. That's just my thoughts. So I would suggest that we revisit it at the second last meeting in April, and it still gives us some time to get it back to May 1st.
Superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
Sure, and through you, Mr. Chair, my only other response to that would be, and not that this is a reason why we can't do it, but if the public board is moving forward to publish theirs and we are not, it will lead to questions. It will lead to questions as to why we're not moving forward.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
I, I hear you. Thank you through, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Crowell. I hear what you're saying. I guess I just think it's more prudent if we do accept it now, it's harder to retract it if we have to change it. In a couple of weeks, I really feel it's just a good move and gives us a little bit of breathing space. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jeff, trust, our superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
That's okay, thank you. Again, through you, Mr. Chair, just to respond to trustee O'Brien, I hear you. My sense would be, though, that all boards in the province are in the same boat, and all boards are working with the same timelines. I think if there was a change that needed to be made to the school year calendar, it wouldn't be for our board only, it would be for all boards, and it'd be something that comes through the ministry. So while I recognize that we want to be prudent, we want to sort of, sort of adhere to the timelines that were given. I think, I will be honest with you, a lot of parents have been waiting for us to put our calendar out. I've received a number of contacts from parents wanting to know when our calendar's going to be out, so those are reasons why we may want to move forward.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The only other comment I would make to this is, is the information is already published on our website as it being pending, so it's there now for everybody's information. So that being said, whether it's approved tonight or not, it's made available to parents that it's pending, and I'm not saying that we not approve it, I'm just saying that we delay approval on it and give us a little bit of time based on the climate and what's going on these days. I think there's other things that are more important on parents' mind right now, and it's not next year's calendar, it's getting through the next few weeks. I think there's other things that are more important on parents' mind right now, and it's not next year's calendar, it's getting through the next few weeks.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at it with a different lens. I think that with these uncertain, uncertainty times, that things will change and we'll be flexible, but it also sends in a good optics that, you know, we're trying to take care of business, and we're going to send this out for publication that we're planning into next year. So I think we should publish this, and no delay.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to hear what could be some of a suggestion of what sort of, what could change? What could we be looking at that could change? Superintendent Crowell?
The only thing that I could think of, and this is just, you're kind of putting me on the spot here, so I will do my best. I would, if it's, if it's possible that the ministry asks us to return earlier, obviously, we are in unprecedented times, but that would be something that would be asked of all boards and not just our board, so it would impact all calendars and not just our calendar.
Trustee Carabella.
Oh, thank you. Fine, that's my hand up from before. I don't have another question. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've been, I've been raising my hand.
So, 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 Trustee, Trustee DeRosa, Trustee DeRosa, you need to type in the box.
I did.
Okay.
Anyways, it doesn't matter. I don't want to interfere with the process. I'm just making a remark that I've been trying to weigh in on this a few times now, and somehow the, the message doesn't come.
We're not seeing you, Trustee DeRosa, in the box. Just as an FYI, maybe you can fix it, but we're not seeing you in the chat, just so you know.
I understand that. I get it. I, I understand that technology is preventing us from, from doing this. I'm not, I don't feel ignored by any stretch of the imagination. So it's a technological issue, which I'm, frankly, I don't know how to solve right now. If you will, will you allow me, Mr. Chair, just to weigh in very, very simply on this?
Go ahead. You have the floor at this particular moment.
Somebody else ahead of me. Is someone else, could somebody else put up, put up their hand ahead of me, or is it, has everybody had an opportunity to comment?
Okay, so the person that puts the motion on the floor gets to speak last, and that was Trustee Guzzo. You have the floor now, so you may proceed.
So my, my simple observation on this is that we should take the lead in the recommendation of the staff, especially if there's a logistics issue with respect to when this, when the deadline is for this, and in view of the fact that other boards have already taken the lead, we should take the lead. Regardless if there's items that change and we, and we know that's, you know, things change every day here, we can adjust accordingly, and we'll be adjusting in coordination with everybody else. So I strongly recommend that we follow the recommendation of, of staff on this. That's it.
Is there any other questions or comments? If not, then I will allow the mover of this motion to go to, to have the last say. Trustee Guzzo.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the conversation. I still hold true to the fact that whether or not our co-terminus board has passed it or not, it has been made available for everybody to see. I also don't think that people are looking to see what's happening at March break next year. I think people are just trying to navigate through everything that they're dealing with on a day-to-day, sometimes hourly basis. That being said, in light of not belaboring this point anymore, I will withdraw my amendment.
Oh, no.
Okay, so the amendment has been withdrawn, so can I have a motion to approve the motion?
I move it.
Moved by Trustee DeRosa, seconded by Trustee O'Hern Zernota. I will now take a vote. Trustee Murphy.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, could you just repeat the amendment to the motion?
So the, there is no amendment on the, there's no amendment? Because Trustee Guzzo has withdrawn it, so we go back to the original motion that was read. I will read the motion again. Resolve that the Houghton Catholic District School Board approved the 2020-2021 school year calendar as presented. I need a mover. Moved by, moved by DeRosa?
Yes.
Trustee DeRosa, can I have a second there? Trustee O'Brien.
I did already.
Mr. Chair, we already had a mover and a second on that, didn't we?
No, we had a mover and a second there on the amended.
Okay.
On the amendment. So I will now take it to a vote. Trustee Murphy. In favor. Student Trustee Brambra.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Opposed.
Student Trustee Swan.
Opposed.
Trustee, Student Trustee Caratau.
Abstention.
Motion passes. Agenda item 8.2, policy I-35, trustee honoraria. Trustee Duert, can you please speak to the motion as I don't have a complete motion in front of me? Or read the motion on my behalf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Houghton Catholic District School Board reword policy I-35 trustee honoraria as follows. Remove the second bullet under requirement which currently states enrollment amount as outlined in ORAG 357/06, section 6, brackets 1 to 4. The enrollment amount is calculated in you in each year of a member's term of office using the original budget estimates projected average daily enrollment for the school board fiscal year that ends in the calendar year in which the year of the term of office begins, and replace with, for the purpose of section 6, the enrollment of the board for a year of a term of office is the estimate, estimate of the board's day school average daily enrollment that was A, determined for the purpose of the regulation made under section 234 of the Act in respect of calculating average daily enrollment for the school board fiscal year that ends in the calendar year in which the year of the term of office begins, and B, submitted to the ministry together with the estimates required by clause 232, bracket 6, section, subsection C of the Act, ORAG 163/07, section 6, colon, ORAG 164, section, stroke 11, section 1.
Before I ask, so it's my motion. I need a second there, and then we can discuss it.
I can second it.
Trustee Duert. Any discussion on the matter? There's no discussion. I will take it to a vote.
I have a question.
Trustee O'Brien.
Okay, I'm just trying to, thank you through you, Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to digest this, and I, I'm looking at it. It's really a thing of word crafting here to make it in line with the ministry's Education Act, I get it. But just, so I'm clear, there's no change in pay, right?
So I can speak to that. There's no change in pay. So all we are doing is removing the old wording, which was from 2010, and updating it to December 1st, 2018. Nothing changes, everything stays the same.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions? Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. No, Tim, I kind of asked the question. I just wanted to know if there was any differences from the original to the current state. Thank you.
So I've already answered it. So, Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
So all we're doing here is some cleanup, right? We're realigning the act to the policy.
Correct.
Okay, my only, my, my question is somewhat procedural. Can you explain why we're not doing through, doing this through the policy committee? And also, we are not, by any way, by any stretch of the imagination, trying to affect the original decision that was made to pay the honorarium a few meetings back, right?
So I can address that, and I will address it, I will address it in the following way. All we have, all we are doing is removing the old wording of an old regulation and instituting the new regulation, which came into effect December 1st, 2018. This does not require to go back to policy because we're just transposing, removing the old and replacing it with the new.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I will take this matter to a vote. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Student Trustee Caratau.
In favor.
Student Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Duert.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Student Trustee Brambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Abstain.
Motion carries. So I need, there was an error made at the approval of the agenda. I was told that the motion, the amendment, amendment to the motion to move agenda item 8.3 would be moved into information. I did not vote. I, I forgot to vote. If I vote, that matter, so the vote will be equal, as such, because there was an abstention. As such, the motion fails. Which means that agenda, agenda item, action item 8.3 stays as an action item.
Mr. Chair, can we get a recount of the vote, please?
Yes, I was just going to do that, Trustee DeRosa. So can we have a, a tally of who voted for and who voted against? So I can tell you, I voted for it. Guzzo, Trustee Guzzo voted for it. Trustee Agnew voted for it. Trustee Zernota, you voted for it. Am I correct?
No, I did not.
Okay, so you voted against it? Trustee Murphy?
Sorry.
I voted against moving it.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I think you're reading it the wrong way. The vote was in favor of Trustee Carabella's motion or not.
Correct, that's, that's what I was asking. Right.
That's where we're wrong. Point of order, sorry. The vote was whether or not you agree to put it to a discussion item.
Yes.
To move it from, so there was a motion on the floor to move it, the, the motion was by Trustee Carabella to move it from an action item to an information item.
Right.
Correct. So I'm going through the vote. How did everybody vote? Because I was told that the motion was, one, to move it to information item, I had not voted.
Wouldn't Rosie have those votes, Mr. Chair?
Which is why I'm going around the table and see what she has so that we can compare it. So if you allow me to finish going around the table, then we can look at the vote as it is now, and we can compare it to the vote that was taken before as a verification. So I will continue. So Trustee Murphy?
I voted not to move it.
All right, thank you. Trustee Duert?
I voted not to move it.
Not to move it. Trustee Carabella. Of course, it's your motion, so you voted against, you voted to move it.
In favor to move it.
Yes, yes, favor. O'Brien, Trustee O'Brien?
I voted in favor.
Favor, to move it. Trust, Student Trustee Swan?
So I wanted to change my vote, but I don't think I'm allowed to do that right now.
Actually, you can't change your vote.
I can, okay, so, so.
Mr. Chair, with all due respect, are we, let's do this step, step by step so we can, we can at least make some sense out of it, right? First of all.
Here's what I, wait a minute. So, so listen, I, I,
Let me suggest something to you.
I'm chairing the meeting. Trustee DeRosa.
Can you, do you have a tally of the original vote? Can we have a tally of the, of the original vote first? Because I don't know where we're going here anymore now. We're changing votes.
Can you allow me to ask Rosie to weigh in and provide us with your original vote?
Thank you very much, sir.
No problem.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me? It's Rosie.
Yes, we can.
In favor of moving to a discussion item, Trustee DeRosa, Student Trustee Caratau, Student Trustee Swan, Trustee O'Brien, Trustee Carabella, Student Trustee Biambra, Trustee O'Hern Zernota, Trust, Chair Ian Tomasi. Opposed to moving it was Trustee Duert, Trustee Murphy, Trustee Agnew, Trustee Guzzo.
So what's the, what, based on that tally, what is the count?
Am I missing somebody? One.
Vince didn't vote, Rosie?
He didn't vote at the beginning. You're correct. I added it now.
Well.
So, so if we're counting trustee votes, we have Trustee DeRosa, one. O'Brien, two. Trustee Carabella, three. Trustee O'Hern, four. Opposed. Go ahead.
Opposed. So technically, the, the reading was, the vote reading was wrong. Because it was a 4-4 tie, the motion fails.
Well.
Trustee O'Brien, the motion, the motion fails because you need to have the majority of vote. And I don't have to vote, which means that the motion fails. So agenda item, action item 8.3 stays where it is. So we've just done agenda, we'll return to our agenda. We've finished 8.2, we will move on to 8.3. The provisions of feminine hygiene products in secondary school. Trustee Agnew, can you please speak to the motion?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. You'll see the motion that's there before you. I'm happy to read through the motion, and then I will be passing it over to Trustee Swan, who has done a tremendous amount of work on this particular initiative. I don't want to take any of the fanfare from him at all. This was certainly something that he brought forth passionately. So, yeah, do you want me to go ahead and read every, their motion? Hello?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So can I have a mover, a second? I was muted, just so you guys know.
Yeah.
Moved by Trustee Guzzo, seconded by Trustee Guzzo. So it's moved by, trusted, and seconded by Trustee Guzzo. Now we can take it, we can have a discussion.
Do you need me to read the motion first, or are you okay with it?
So generally speaking, you would speak to it first, and then we can read the motion.
Okay, so I would like to pass it over to Trustee Swan to take us through the information and rationale for this motion.
Thank you. Student Trustee Swan, you- Student trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Perfect, thank you very much. Um, I would also like to thank trustee Guzzo and trustee Agnew for supporting me on this initiative. Um, I've given a lot of reflection to this, in particular, because I've had multiple students actually approach me. Um, and really, the bulk of this issue actually started from our student senate meeting. Uh, I had brought up the idea of period poverty. Um, the fact that there continues to be inadequate access to menstrual hygiene, tools and education, and in particular with sanitary products. I've heard from multiple students and student senators, they've expressed to me that, um, you know, whenever they needed a pad or a tampon. Um, first of all, most students didn't even know that these products were already available in their own office, um, in their, like, their school office. And when they were available, they felt extremely uncomfortable going into the office, asking a secretary or an admin officer, you know, can I have a pad or a tampon, or any sort of menstrual product? And in cases where they need them urgently, they see this pretty much as a barrier. Um, and especially if they don't have one on them, or they can't really afford it. And it actually really surprised me that even in Canada, where the country that you would least expect menstrual products to not be accessible, we continue to see one in seven girls, elementary and secondary, who miss school or leave school entirely, just because they don't have access to these products in the first place. And even then, we also have one-third of Canadian women under the age of 25, who say that, who said that they struggled to afford these menstrual products in the first place. And I point to the fact that, at a critical point, where students may start having their own periods in either grade seven or grade eight, it's vital that we have these products not only in our secondary schools, but also elementary schools. And I feel very firmly that this would actually help them in their transition, as they're experiencing new changes to their own bodies, such as puberty. And they understand what it means to embrace self-care, and what it means to really embrace menstrual health. I think it also helps to break that stigma around that topic. In the motion, I've actually, in, uh, one of the clauses stated that we include dispensers, uh, dispensers installed in the washrooms. And I believe that this would help to promote more sanitary conditions. It helps to facilitate access to students who really need them. Um, for instance, if we have custodians who are filling these up regularly, and they, um, and this is kind of kept under lock and key, and students take from these dispensers, they're less likely to be tampered with. And so I really felt that, you know, coming, just from a student perspective, I, I do believe that it's really not much different than, say, a breakfast program that's being offered at school. It's not much more different than having, say, toilet paper or soap in the washrooms. Uh, quite literally, menstrual products are part of hygiene. Without them, they're not, we're not setting up students for a genuine success. And we don't expect students to be carrying soap or toilet paper into the washrooms as well. So, um, for me, it made, it was pretty clear to me that, you know, having these pads or menstrual products in the washrooms would be a necessity. And so I think at the end of the day, it's really important that we really, that we take a step forward with this. Um, I believe that these are small wins that can be achieved, and we won't be the only ones doing this. We've, we've saw multiple boards doing this and carrying this out. We, we've seen Toronto District School Board, Toronto Catholic District School Board, Thames Valley District School Board, Waterloo Region District School Board. They've all made commitments to making sure that this initiative, uh, or this type of initiative goes forward. And when students are given the resources they need, they will feel safer, they will feel more comfortable. And I feel that we need to champion this for our students on behalf, for the Halting Catholic District School Board. Support of equity and inclusion. And I would like to end this off by referring back to our strategy plan. The plan that we crafted for the next five years and beyond, really in the belonging pillar, which is really to embrace relationships and sustain safe and welcome schools. And I think that having these products in the washrooms will just make our schools even more, um, even more welcoming to our students. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Hang on. So now I'll open the floor for questions.
Mr. Chair, I have my hand up.
Trustee Duarte.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, trustee Swan. You, you've done some thinking, and it's a good idea to do this. Uh, you thought through the details. I have a couple of questions here, and I'm just wondering whether you have thought about the budget and the cost that's going to be involved? Uh, do you have some ballpark idea, amount for how much it's going to cost every year? Uh, because this is through the whole school board, we have a certain number of female students in all the schools. So we, you should have done some, some numbers on this whole thing. That's the first thing which I, which I was thinking about. Second thing I was wondering about, the liabilities that are issues which may exist when you store such a product in a washroom. And I've been to a washroom, high school washroom, and it was terrible. So I'm just wondering, how can we store this product in a place which is not very hygienic in, in nature? And this product is to be used? So have you thought about that part of it? And the third thing is, I was thinking about was, you mentioned about, uh, the product being kept under lock and key. So what difference does it make if it's kept in the office to here? Have you thought about that process? So if you could talk about that, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, so I guess I'll start with your first point, which is about the budget, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so it will really depend on the board itself. Um, I, I guess ballpark would be $50,000 to $100,000. Um, but that really depends on the size of the board, and we're talking about maintaining the, we're maintaining kind of, how am I supposed to say this, the supply, I guess? Uh, because you're putting them into washrooms, you would expect more people to use them. But it really depends on the board, and I, it's, uh, it would be inaccurate for me to give a, a good estimate for our board in particular, I would allow the staff to actually take a look at that. Um, so I forgot, what was your second question again? I-
Trustee Swan, the second part, my second question was regarding the liability of a product which is placed in a washroom, and being stored, especially being stored in a, in an area which is not totally sanitary, I would say, not hygienic in nature. So it could lead us to some liability issues, so that was my second thing.
Okay. So in response to that question, so I, I do understand that there are concerns about, you know, putting these, um, products in the washrooms. Um, I know especially in the boys' washrooms, it's a- So I, I- It's a little bit, um, I think that it really depends on the environment, environment. So I think what's really important to realize is that, um, it, it really comes down to more about, like, education to students. I think that a lot of the times, um, yeah, I think the washroom does get a little bit of, um, how should I say this? The, even though, even though there are people, uh, there are people who will cause some sort of, like, mess in the washroom, for instance, um, I think a lot of it has to come down to making sure that students understand why we are doing it. I was actually talking with our equity officer, uh, I believe her name was Seda, and really, it's much more of a problem in the boys' washrooms than in the girls' washrooms. I think what I've been hearing is that in the girls' washrooms, people are a little bit more, um, how should I say this? They, they tend to be a little, a little bit more, um, like, they, they're not as, they're not as hectic, I guess, for lack of better words, um, than, like, say, in the boys' washrooms. And I think that they're, they understand this issue very well. They understand that everybody shares the same kind of issues with this. And so I think the likelihood of that coming, that, uh, coming up as a issue, that's a constant issue, I think that's, um, that it's, uh, I think it's something to definitely look at. But I think it's just because, um, girl, people in that situation, they, they have a different perspective on that in particular. Um, and then your third question was-
My third question was regarding, uh, the misuse-
So your third question was-
Mis, uh, regarding the misuse and vandalism. You said the product would be kept under lock and key. So in order to access the product, they would have to go somewhere and bring the key, which is no difference than, different than storing the product in the office, or something like that. So how, how, uh, what did you think about it? How did you think through the process, how the student would access this if it's under lock and key?
In the washroom. So I would say, so as I mentioned, um, custodians would be, so what I suggested, but I didn't put it exactly in the motion, was that custodians would be refilling these dispensers, so-called dispensers, in the washrooms. And it would be kept under lock and key, and then students could take one or two if they need to.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and, oh, sorry, yeah.
Who's next?
I think trustee Zernota, I think so.
Trustee Guzzo is in queue.
Thank you, trustee, uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, to trustee Swan, thank you so much for championing this. Uh, the work that you did in this was amazing. It made it very easy for, uh, for trustee Agnew and I to, to support. Um, just a couple of points. Um, this really does fall in line with our equity and inclusion. Um, also, some of the comments were made was the cost associated with this. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but there's lots of campaigns from suppliers of these products. Uh, for example, always does the hashtag end period poverty. This is a movement that is going on, this is something that we would be joining, and we should be proud to join. Um, there's cost incentives, there are, um, there are, there's the ability to donate products. And not only that, these product suppliers, most of them will actually help us in facilitating, in providing, whether it be dispensers, if that is the, the route that, uh, uh, facilities decide would be best, or whether it be in a basket. And I think trustee Swan has given some options in regards to how it's done. The point is, is that there shouldn't be an ask. Um, you know, our students, our female students should feel to be able, to be comfortable to go to the washroom and not have to ask. Studies show that, um, tons of females actually leave school, um, and part of it is associated to the period poverty. So I commend you for bringing this forward. I am very pleased and happy to support you through this. Um, and hopefully, we can bring some awareness and, and create a campaign that goes throughout all of our schools equally, and, um, and that we all get behind it and support each other.
Uh, next in queue is trustee Ohern Zernota.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, student trustee Swan, amazing, excellent. Um, I was also personally involved in what we call the period purse party. So yes, the movement is on its way, and I remember, you know, almost 100 years ago, when I was a young female, and we did have them in the washrooms back in those days. I'm wondering, I guess, maybe too many people were maybe taking them home, how it got back into the office? But having them into the private washrooms for the females of our buildings, I think, is a great initiative, and, and should have happened a lot sooner. So thank you, and I'm fully in support of it.
Next in queue is trustee De Rosa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Swan, I want to commend you on the work and, and championing this case, because I think, um, in principle, this is, um, this is a very, very easy issue to support. My only, my only word of caution is that I'd like to hear the actual experiences, um, from the staff. And I was hoping that maybe we can get some, some facts to base the decision on. And this is not necessarily an issue of cost. The motion itself alludes, very specifically, alludes to the fact that the location of these dispensers should be in the washrooms. And I think, uh, depending on, on who you talk to, um, that is a good idea, or maybe not a good idea. So, um, for, we're strictly for logistic reasons, and not for, uh, not supporting the, the recommendation or the program. Um, what I'm missing here is, uh, is the, um, the view of the staff and their experience with the everyday, um, with the everyday experience of this, of this issue. So, um, I would recommend that, that, that in order to get that, we, we task, um, the staff with, with a small report that can come back to us. And then we can make, uh, a decision, uh, which I, I presume would be in favor, but based on facts and based on, on everybody's experience on this.
Trustee De Rosa, we do have a senior staff member that wishes to address your concerns. Um, superintendent, superintendent Penelli, can you please speak to this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, much appreciated. This is a great motion, uh, and a, and definitely something that needs to be considered seriously. As an experienced female, in having worked in several boards, as a teacher, as, as a vice principal, as a superintendent, these were in female washrooms many years ago. Unfortunately, what happened over years is that they were not, um, they were tampered with, they were damaged, and administration had to change their approach in how to dispense. Schools still have them, and I can appreciate that, uh, our trust, student trustee has a perspective. But I think there is a need for further investigation as to how to proceed with this, rather than just, i- it isn't emotional, it's, it's, uh, something that is very dear to all of us. But I think there needs to be a better way in terms of how not just to immediately put them up, because I think there needs to be an educational piece that has to go with this as well.
Trustee Agnew, you have the floor. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of comments. Again, um, I wanted to thank trustee Swan for all of his work on this. Um, and recognizing that, you know, it's not just his opinion, uh, but he, but rather, uh, he is bringing forward what I believe is, um, the opinion of many. Uh, he spent a lot of time researching this and speaking to his fellow students. Um, and this is certainly something that we are seeing happening in other schools. This is not new. Um, this is an initiative that seems to be coming, um, across far and wide, um, in a number of boards. So just a couple of comments I wanted to make, perhaps as a female, um, but just, uh, around. Trustee Duarte had a couple of comments with respect to hygiene and liability. Um, so I would just say this, that I would expect that our washrooms would be clean. Uh, if they are not clean, that's a very different conversation that we need to be having, but I would expect that they should be clean. Um, the products are wrapped products, um, so, you know, they are hygienic in their nature to begin with. I don't believe that there's a liability any further than there would be for us providing toilet paper in those washrooms. Um, I also do firmly believe that these are products, uh, much like trustee Zernota had said, uh, you know, when I was in high school, they were available, we had to pay for them back then. Um, and perhaps that's why there was more tampering going on, perhaps that's why, um, people were trying to take advantage of that, is that they were not being offered for free. But we are currently offering them for free, I just don't believe they need to be in an office. Um, that's not where you need them, if you need one. And, um, you know, if you go to any public restrooms, the, a lot of them will still have dispensers on hand. Uh, it's the right place for it to be. Um, and I just think that we have the opportunity here to, um, to do a good thing. So those are my comments.
Trustee, trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to trustee Swan for bringing this up, and trustee Guzzo, and, uh, trustee Agnew for bringing it forward. So, um, I was hoping for more discussion, and I think even trustee Swan mentioned that he would be interested to hear what staff had to say about the, the cost. I would like to know, um, what we, so right now, as I understand it, we have nothing in the bathrooms for the girls? Is that correct?
That is correct, actually, trustee Carabella. As of right now, I, I'm under, I'm under the, sorry, I'm under the impression that, um, students have to go to the office to try to access these products.
Okay. So I guess, I guess I'm also referring back to trustee Duarte and the cost effect. I'm, you know, I know this is important for girls, and, um, just wondering, you know, the number of schools we have, how many dispensers we would need, and, um, the fill rate, what, what it looks like, and maybe compared to what we have right now, what we're servicing right now. Um, I think, you know, again, just, uh, to have, base, base our decision on some facts that we know going forward, that the staff can also, the facilities management staff can give us some direction, um, some implementation plan, or is it possible to maybe have a pilot and see if it's really going to answer the needs? And how is, how are we gonna, and, and a plan for- And how is, how are we gonna, and, and a plan for an education piece as well, so that we're, we're more involved? So that, those are my thoughts, that if we could wait to, uh, get some feedback on this from the staff, I would think that would be a, a good way to go as well. I could make a motion for that if, but I see there's more people who are in the queue to speak, so I will wait for that.
Okay, so next in line is trustee Murphy or?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you to, uh, student trustee Swan for your hard work and trustee, uh, Guzzo and Agnew for, for the support. I think it's a great initiative. A lot of the issues we're talking about are procedural issues. There are issues that we can solve. We, quite a few years ago, we sent people to the moon and we got them back safely. So I think we can figure out the dynamics of, uh, making these products available. We're talking about the cost issue. Believe it or not, I, I live in a house full of more females than males and, um, have some experience in, in these areas. People are, you know, the reality is, is just because we make some of these products available, not everybody is going to use them. People are very specific on what products they use. And I don't really foresee this being a, a high volume issue necessarily. More importantly, uh, a little while ago, I saw a news piece, uh, on the, the high school. I think it was in Vancouver, in, uh, in an urban area. And they had a high dropout rate amongst female students. And after some investigation, they were, they determined that because of the, uh, the poverty rate, a lot of female students couldn't afford these products. Because of the sensitivity and the embarrassment, they stopped going to school. Once they fell behind, it became very difficult to catch up. And as you know, when you don't graduate from high school, your chances in life, uh, are lessened. So it really is a significant issue. We have the potential of, if we said 10% of our students are below the poverty line, uh, if you look at, you know, potentially we're talking about three, four, 500 students, let's say, that may need these products, then we could be impacting three or 400 people's lives. If we make these products available to them, it's one less obstacle that they have to overcome, uh, living below the poverty line to try and have a successful life. So to me, really, we're talking about semantics on the procedural side. Yes, we have to figure things out. There's going to be a certain cost, let's look at that. But, uh, really, we have the ability and the, the smarts around this table to figure it out and figure it out fairly quickly.
So I will, uh, do I have the, am I on? We have a senior staff manner, member that can address some of the questions that have been raised. So I will turn it over to, um, superintendent Merrick to weigh in on this matter.
Thank you, and through the chair. So I did some digging when I saw this pop up on the, uh, on the agenda. The dispensers, um, that are offered through our, uh, our, our current, uh, consumables provider, uh, they run between $400 and $600, uh, per dispenser. So call it $500 on average. And then as far as the number of washrooms, if I'm looking at just student washrooms, uh, we'll have about 150, uh, student washrooms across all of our schools, uh, female washrooms, that is. Looking at, uh, uh, if we're going to add in the accessible washrooms as well, then we're up around 200. And I did see that motion says all female washrooms or for adding staff washrooms as well. Uh, we're going to go up from there, probably closer to 250 to 300 washrooms. So, um, that's just to give you an idea of the numbers. I know doesn't like cost is, uh, is necessarily the, the, the be all and end all here, but, uh, that's kind of the, the numbers we're looking at. Uh, and I'd suggest that if, uh, if trustees are going to go ahead with this motion, um, then we could bring it back. We'll be in the budget cycle very soon. Uh, we can bring back, uh, do more digging on the numbers and come back with you with a budget number, uh, that you could put in for your new initiatives for, uh, the 2020, 2021 budget.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, just a couple of things, and now superintendent Merrick has added to my comments here. Uh, just in regards to the vandalization comment that was made earlier, you know, really, at the end of the day, we had issues with toilet paper in one of the high schools and really that becomes a supervisory issue. So I don't see us putting, you know, people at disadvantage because of maybe of, of a 5% of, of students who, you know, take things, uh, a little too far. That's something that we should be able to manage through. In regards to superintendent Merrick's comments about how many washrooms. So this motion is around, um, our students. So I'm not sure that the spirit of this motion included, um, the, the teachers bathrooms, but we can, that, I can allow trustee Swan to elaborate on that, but that really wasn't the spirit. In regards to this motion, this motion is speaking specifically to period poverty and the effects it has on our female students. In regards to the cost per washroom, as I said earlier, and I made mention of the campaigns that are there, it's the hashtag end period poverty. There's tons of movements that are actually happening globally. We actually see them happening in third world, third world countries where, uh, they're supporting these initiatives. We haven't even looked at the fact, there's so many ways that we can deal with this. And if we are actually providing the product that's in it, I think that that number would be very different. And if we're already providing it in student, in schools right now, we already have money set aside for it. There's already a budget for it. The question is, is where that money is coming from, whether it's coming from a school perspective or it's coming from a board's, uh, from an individual school's perspective, or it's coming from a board's perspective. So really, at the end of the day, you know, there's not much to discuss in, in what the end result this is. And I think trustee Murphy, you know, thank you for your comments because I think, you know, the fact is, is yes, there are absolutely studies and trustee Swan also spoke to them as well. Is there are students who are affect, whose their learning is affected about this? And we need to stop that. We have control over that. And if there's something that we can do to help it, then it doesn't matter what the cost is associated with it. We will be able to find this. This is an important initiative and it falls in line again, as I said earlier, in regards to our equity and inclusion plan, uh, which also falls in line with our strategic, uh, strategic plan. Thank you.
Trustee, uh, student trustee Caratau, you have the floor.
Hello there, um, I'd just like to, uh, speak to you a couple of things regarding this motion. My thanks first goes to my friend and colleague, uh, Mr. Delux Swan. He's done a great job in, um, putting together this motion. And I also thank trustees Guzzo and Agnew for bringing it to the board. I also agree with what trustee Murphy, uh, has been saying in which I think we should focus on the ideal of this motion is, I believe, a social good. And although the devil may be in the details, I truly, uh, trust our senior staff and the board of trustees to, you know, hammer out those details as we go along. And although they may be challenging, I believe that, um, the ideal of this, uh, motion is one that we really should, uh, further, right? In consultation with people in my own schools and with our student senate, all of us trustees, we're consulting with the senators, there is a problem because even as, uh, uh, trustee Swan has mentioned, some schools do have these mental products available in offices, but other senators report that they don't have in their schools at all. And whether or not they actually do have them in the offices, um, available, there is a problem there with visibility. A lot of people just don't know that they have access to these, uh, products. And I feel like that they should. It is, you know, a social good for so many students. And our board and talking to people from my school and the senators from other schools, it's something that a lot of female students would really, uh, love to have. It would be a great, uh, boost to their learning environment. So I believe, uh, the board should really consider the importance of this issue. And especially for students, because not only are students, uh, in support of it, also our student senate and even our student trustees association has furthered and recommended and helped, you know, us student trustees put this, um, motion together. So I believe, sorry, this is a little rambling because my notes aren't very clear, I have bad handwriting. But that's essentially what I'm saying, is that although there's a lot of details to sort out, I believe that the idea behind this motion is one that's very good and I encourage the board to support it. That's about all for me.
Trust, trustee DeRoo, I got the phone, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I would like to reiterate, reiterate my support for, for, uh, this motion, with the exception of the fact that it, uh, it presumes that the washrooms is the, the location. I am, uh, I would like, um, if the board wants to move forward with the approval, I will vote for it. But I would really like to have, um, uh, the staff weigh in on the logistics of it. And maybe there is a better location than the washrooms. Uh, as I have heard from a number, from a number of remarks. So, um, if there is no opportunity to have the, the staff weigh in, uh, so be it. But certainly, this is less than ideal to make a decision for me right now. I will support it though.
Uh, trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Um, I just want to reiterate, thank you through you, Mr. Chair.
Just a minute, trustee Guzzo, just a minute. I just want to make a, a note of something here. So, um, trustee Agnew, who is the mover on this matter, will be the last speaker and she's be, after you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I was just going to make a comment in regards to the location piece. And as trustee Swan pointed out, the reason why this makes the most sense is because it's the embarrassment and it's the humility of having to go and ask for it. So the easiest and, and most sensical place to put it would be in, in the bathrooms, where students can excuse themselves and go and not have to worry about going to their locker, or going to find a teacher, or the teacher who is assigned to distributing these. The fact is, is it eliminates all these stigmas attached to it and it adds to student achievement. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, will you allow just one, one afterthought?
Floor.
One, just one afterthought?
We have other people who are waiting to speak.
So, so, uh, trustee DeRosa, bear with me. Trustee Guzzo has finished, trustee Agnew has the floor. She is the mover and as the mover, she can end discussion on this matter, which means I'm saying I'm ending debate and I'm closing it with trustee Guzzo, I mean trustee Agnew. Oh, you missed, so sorry, we missed trustee Carabella. So before, so before I go to trustee Agnew, I will put it, I will give the floor to trustee Carabella.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I understand, uh, getting missed. There's lots of messages going up in the chat bar. So, um, um, yeah, so I'm listening to the both sides and, you know, again, I support the motion in that. I would, would like to, um, get some more final facts from the staff. So I would put forward a motion to, to, for staff to come back at the next meeting. Doesn't look like it's too, uh, complicated to give me, uh, to give us what we need. For staff to come back next meeting, next board meeting with a cost analysis, a plan of implementation and an education plan, so that, um, yeah, so I would, I would move that.
So what is your motion?
So we're just waiting for one, one, uh, meeting. The motion is for the staff. I move that, uh, this motion, the staff, I move that we, let's come back at the next meeting with a cost analysis, a plan of implementation, uh, maybe what we already have, what it's costing now, and, um, an education plan to, you know, let the girls know. And that's going to be well used, how are we going to, well, now I'm rambling, just an education plan, period.
So is it fair to say that your motion would then be to defer this matter pending a report from staff? Which would?
Thank you.
Would include, which would include costs and, um, the rollout plan?
Yes, thank you, that's better.
All right, do I have a, do I have a second there?
I will second that.
Trustee DeRosa. I, I will now take it to a vote. So I will begin with trustee Guzzo.
Hold on, just clarification, Mr. Chair. You're taking a vote on, um, trustee Carabella's proposed deferral?
Which is an amendment to your motion.
Right, so that's what we're voting on, is the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I will take it to a vote. Trustee Guzzo.
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
Opposed.
Trustees, student trustee Bambra. Student trustee Bambra. All right, move on to trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
So I'll go back to trustee, I go back to student trustee Bambra.
Opposed.
Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Caratau.
Opposed.
Trustee Swan.
Opposed.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
Opposed.
All right, the mo, the motion, the amendment to the motion fails. I will now close debate unless trustee Agnew has some last points to make.
No, I'm good, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everyone for the constructive conversation and, um, yeah, we're ready to vote.
All right, let's take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa.
In favor.
Trustee Caratau.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte. Duarte.
In, in favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hearn Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Motion parry, carries. Moving on to agenda item number nine, there are.
You didn't ask me, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, you didn't ask my vote.
Sorry, my apologies. Trustee Carabella.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, my apologies.
Trustee O'Brien vote.
I, I did ask for O'Brien and he said yes. All right, I will ask again, trustee O'Brien.
My apologies, I didn't hear it, thank you.
In favor.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Thanks for indulging me. Uh, moving on to agenda item number nine, staff reports. There are no staff reports. Information items. Agenda item 10.1, student trustee Caratau, can you please provide your report to us?
Yes, of course. Um, just as always, we divided it into, um, three sections and I'll take achieving and the other two will be, uh, divided between my co-student trustees. So, um, under the strategic priority of achieving, our student senate meeting that was scheduled for March 24th, just last week, was canceled due to the, uh, school closure that occurred and still continuing. Uh, on the agenda for the meeting was to execute the debate session as professional development, as stated in our other student trustee report, the one that we borrowed from the, um, PD activity that we had at OSTA. Um, and then we would also do the, um, the mock board meeting group, um, like, uh, sort of model, as, uh, we had explained before. Um, and it is unclear whether the tentative, uh, date for our next student senate meeting, which is April 28th, 2020, will be able to go as planned. But we are going to anticipate any changes, uh, changes which seem to be announced today. So we will make a plan regarding that. Additionally, uh, the French Education Symposium in Ottawa, which was scheduled for April 6th and to be hosted by my co-trustee Swan, was also canceled due to the current pandemic. The conference was aimed to, um, help students understand, um, issues in French education and, uh, to help, you know, enhance the quality of teaching and learning in those courses. You know, expose students to new resources to help them learn French and improve on, you know, uh, becoming fluent in the French language. The French Relations Working Group of OSTA ECO have been structuring a survey in order to address the changes that have, uh, come up. And we are going to release it to student trustees, so that then they can forward it to, uh, the relevant departments and our boards. So, uh, Mr. Swan is going to take charge of that. Uh, the next pillar, I believe.
So I guess.
So, I guess, I guess I can take believing.
Sorry, my laptop glitched. Okay, leaving. Can you guys hear me? Testing thing.
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
That's good.
Okay, I'm going to continue with believing. At the 2020 Catholic Board Council, yes? The CBC President and Vice President has, in consultation with our Catholic Student Trustees Association, OCSTA, and the WE Centre decided to cancel the Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day. This event would have been held on May 6th, 2020, to celebrate Catholic education in Ontario, as well as empowering young leaders to put their faith into action. All three student trustees were also disappointed to see OSTA 2020 AGM being canceled due to this pandemic, but they understand that safety is paramount. Student trustees are hopeful this event will be rescheduled.
Awesome, and I guess I will conclude with belonging. So, OSTA ECO has been very active in trying to push this survey out. It's relating to education equity, called barriers to education. OSTA ECO really wants to understand what kind of challenges the students are currently facing in the education system, such as availability of resources, external opportunities in their school, what is the impact of their education, et cetera. And we are working currently with our student senate, as well as individual schools, to try to reach out to secondary students like Instagram, as well as Twitter. OSTA ECO is trying to get around 3,000 responses from students across the province, but we know that the pandemic has unfortunately hindered that. And over the past week, we've been kind of inundated with a lot of questions about, you know, what is the next few weeks going to look like in the, for the school year? We've been trying our best to answer all the questions. We've been trying to direct people to the board's website, if need be. And OSTA ECO participated in a call with the Ministry of Education a couple of days ago, I believe, was on Thursday, to really understand how students will be accommodated through their, through the plan to continue learning online during this. And I'll be happy to take any questions on, at this time.
Are there any questions, trustees? No questions. Agenda item 10.2, Continuing Learning Distance Instruction: Support and Assessment. I will turn this matter over to Director Daly.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. The report that you have was, it was originally an in-camera report and written in a period of time. So, it really speaks a little bit more to what's happened over the last two weeks, and not as much detail as, as to what's to come. Trustees are aware that the Premier and the Minister of Education announced today that school closures would be extended for students until May 4th. We communicated that to staff and parents this afternoon. Not in a great amount of detail, because we were waiting for the details from the ministry with regards to next steps. So, we received that detailed information early this evening. So, I'm going to share some of that information with you, and then we can talk a little bit about some specifics of our board plan. So, the ministry's made it clear that their goal is in line with our goal, and that's to ensure the successful, successful completion of the school year for all students, elementary and secondary, for our secondary students to be able to earn their credits, and certainly for our secondary senior students to be able to graduate. Some of the key elements of the memo that we received earlier this evening, school boards with their teachers and other staff should be contacting students and families as soon as possible. We're well on that process. Boards are encouraged to use the provincially licensed virtual learning environment, that's D2L Bright Space. We are inservicing many of our staff to use that particular platform. A number of our staff already use that platform, as well as some other learning management systems. Boards should assess the range of teacher readiness in terms of using online tools. We've been surveying our staff through our principals over the last week and a half on, on that regard. And our curriculum department will be setting up ongoing professional development for our teachers moving forward. One of the things that will be of interest to, to parents, and we will update them again, now that we have some more focused information from the ministry, there are suggested hours of work per student per week. So, for students in kindergarten to grade three, it's five hours of work per student per week, with a focus on literacy and math. For students in grade four to grade six, five hours of work per student per week, with a focus on literacy, math, science, and social studies. For our elementary intermediate students in grade seven and eight, 10 hours of work per student per week, again, with a focus on math, literacy, science, and social studies. And then for our secondary students, or students in grades nine to 12, three hours of work per course per week. Most of our students have four courses in a semester. Some students have three. And the focus is on achieving credits, completing the courses, and for our grade 12 students in graduation. Important to note that hours refer to the approximate amount of time students would spend on work assigned. Teacher work would include the prep of the assigned work, providing feedback and assessment. All students will receive a final report card to conclude the school year. Elementary students, teachers will focus on gathering evidence of how students are progressing, and providing feedback so they can continue to progress. Secondary students will be assigned specific learning tasks, projects, culminating activities for the forms of both formative and summative evaluation. So, a mark will be determined for final course marks. So, again, school boards will be issuing final report cards, including kindergarten communication of learning. For our graduating students, the government has made it clear that there should really be no impediments in terms of requirements for students to graduate. We know that the government's already waived the Ontario Secondary School Literacy requirement for students, if that's an impediment. We were waiting on information as to whether the 40 hours of community service would be suspended for this school year if students hadn't completed that. That is being suspended. Boards need to be able to determine technology or possibly connectivity needs, both for students and staff. We're in that process right now. I mentioned in the original report that one of the concerns raised by teachers and principals was the ability of teachers to return back to schools in order to access some learning materials that they may need. And I'll speak to that in a minute. We do have a plan in place for our teachers to get back into schools. The ministry is encouraging us to use, to leveraging the, the capacity of all of our staff. So, that includes teaching staff, our educational assistants, our DCEs, our social workers, CYCs, CERTs, all of the staff that we have available. So, for some of the, the non-teaching staff, we're working through that as well. So, in terms of, of kind of where we're at, in terms of our plans going forward, I know Superintendent Cipriano did forward a summary of some of the work that's been going on within our special education department over the last week, and going forward. And Superintendent Porcasin is also prepared to highlight some of the work that we're doing with our teachers in order that we can move to teacher-directed learning next week. Just a couple of things to note as well, these are kind of side issues. But, but we'll communicate with this, with parents as well. We are looking at how we can provide run refunds for student activities that maybe haven't taken place, some of hot lunch programs. We're still looking at how we can best support French immersion, extended French ESL programs. We are, schools have already been cleaned once, and that'll happen again before students come back, if, if we're able to get back in May. A couple of trustees have asked questions about whether or not we've been approached by outside agencies to help with some of their supply issues. So, we've been inventorying our, 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 our resources in our schools, and sharing that information with the ministry, so they can allocate some resources if needed. We have also indicated to the ministry that if, if there was a need for childcare facilities for children of emergency or healthcare workers, we'd be willing to do that as well. So, I know there's probably a number of questions to follow. So, maybe we'll go to questions, and I'll answer them as I can.
So, in queue, trustees, I have Trustee O'Brien first. You have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Pat, this comes right from a parent. She's asking, how are teachers going to be able to assess, assess and evaluate work that is being done at home, knowing full well that parents may be helping the students more than they should? That's exactly what it said.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a great question. And certainly, the question around assessment, and assessment and evaluation is something that our teachers are asking as well. Really, for our elementary students, we're hoping that what we can do is assess work in order to see that they're progressing and move them on to the next stage. For our secondary schools, when we're talking about, say, assessment of assignments or work that needs to be handed in, there are some, there are ways that our teachers can make sure that students are submitting their own work. It's really not unlike students handing in work now. So, if work is chunked, or information is handed in in an ongoing process, that's helpful to teachers to make sure to determine it's their own student work. Around the question of assessment, I, through you, Mr. Chair, ask Superintendent Porcasin if there's anything she wants to add to that response.
Superintendent Porcasin, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just specifically with regard to the whole topic of assessment and evaluation, the ministry in its memo today was rather vague, and we have a lot of work to do in order to figure out what is exactly expected of us. Definitely, our teachers do have a good understanding of formative and summative assessment. But for many of our teachers, the growing success document and the work that's completed at home does present a challenge to our way of thinking. But we will adapt our thinking to suit these times and the expectations that the ministry has laid out for us. So, insofar as where we are at right now, we are beginning and finalizing a document for distance learning tips and resources that's being just kind of finalized in the communications department. And we'll be going out to teachers and administrators tomorrow. But the topic of assessment and evaluation will require a little bit more work from our end, and we hope to have that resolved within the week to our teachers. It won't delay the distance learning beginning on Monday, but certainly, we want to make sure that our expectations are clear and in keeping with what our teachers are able to provide.
Thank you.
Student trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to, I think, Director Daly. So, I've received a lot, a lot of questions from students. And in particular, one of them was about access to devices. So, in the Toronto, in particular, the Toronto Catholic District School Board, and Trillium Lakeland District School Board, and a host, whole host of other school boards, they are right now conducting surveys to see who may need extra devices. So, for instance, if students don't have their own personal computers with, to work. So, my question is really, how is the school board making sure that students who may not have a personal device can actually access these platforms? And how are we contacting them?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So, in the communication that went out from school principals to all parents last week, we did directly ask parents to contact their school principal with regards to any issues that they might have, either around access to technology and/or access to a steady Wi-Fi. So, schools are in the process and have been collecting that feedback over the course of the week. I think certainly, as more of the learning rolls out, we'll have more students and parents asking for that type of help. So, that's the, the process that we're working through right now. We're hoping that we can start to address those student needs specifically early next week. Certainly around how devices may be distributed, there are some logistics and a little bit of safety concerns around that. So, we are working on protocols. It's not unlike the protocols we've been working on with our staff. We're working for teachers to get into buildings this Thursday. We released pretty specific protocols to our principals today in order to ensure that there's limited numbers of people in the building, so teachers can access what they need to be able to carry out the job. And then we're hoping to have a plan in place for students who may need access to devices early next week.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to Director Daly. I was wondering if you could please speak to the Bright Space platform you're talking about? And how are teachers going to use that? Will it be a video? Will there be any videos? And can teachers only use that platform? Or can they use those other ones out there, like Google Classrooms? Or, and, and my question is also, so can teachers teach? Or are they going to be assigning work and just receiving work? Thank you. As far as you know.
Thank you, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So, D2L Bright Space, that's the learning management system that our board supports. It's the one that the ministry supports as well. So, in terms of us being able to provide specific professional development and support, both from a curriculum perspective and from IT services, we're encouraging our teachers to use that platform. That being said, we have many teachers in all of our schools who use Google Classroom as their, their platform as well. We're not saying that they can't use that. And for those teachers that are experienced in that platform, they'll continue to use it. It's just not, it's not something that we can support in as fulsome a way as we can with D2L Bright Space. But certainly, teachers do have that flexibility. Some of the cautions that we have with staff, trustees would be aware that there's all kinds of different learning products that are, that are kind of out there, that companies are offering for limited times for free, or asking parents to sign up. We're trying to be really careful with our teachers to keep in mind that we do have board policies around approved different types of apps that we use, and also want to make sure that we protect everybody's privacy. In terms of, and also kind of the general cautions that both the board and the College of Teachers have in place around the use of social media and contacting students. In terms of how lessons will actually be delivered, both D2L and Google Classrooms do offer a wide range of ways that teachers can connect with students. So, it could be a, a video lesson. It could be through a, kind of like the format we're in now, where work's assigned, and, and students send it back, where there's a chat room. What we're not expecting teachers to do, and in fact, it probably really wouldn't work out, is to replicate the school day in the sense that they're going to kind of turn on their video camera at home and teach a lesson from 8:00 AM until the end of the day. Or at the high school level to say, period one starts at 8:10, and it's going to go to 9:25. So, it's really not a full rollout, rollout of online learning. It's really going to be a combination of potentially some video, potentially some live sharing with students, as well as different types of learning in that respect. So, hopefully, that answers some of your questions.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I guess this goes to Director Daly. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. You-
Thank you, trustee Carabella, you asked my question about D2L. So just to touch base on what you just mentioned, Director Daly, in regards to, you know, it not replicating a normal learning day. However, my question is, is how, you know, Google Classroom is set up, and I believe all of the classrooms, we have access to it, we have access to 365. There's so many resources that we have and the capabilities in that. But what I don't understand is if we don't have a teaching portion or a portion, and we don't say straight across the board to all of our schools, then not every child is going to get the same learning experience or same access to a learning experience. I can appreciate that not all teachers are, have the same technological capabilities. However, you know, at this time, we're going to, we'll really find that out, and I think we're, it's a disadvantage if we can't be at least consistent throughout our schools to say, this is what we're doing, this is, this is the idea of what we want you to be following or platform, whatever it may be. I know some of the other school boards are working together, and I've noticed, and I've been looking at their websites, that say specifically that they're launching a platform specific, they're working in conjunction with their board, and that'll be rolled out, and the expectation is April 6th, we're ready to roll. It'll be a virtual learning process, and this is the expectation of it. So what I'm hearing from you is, is I don't hear that there's going to be that continuity piece. I hear that it's going to be a little bit of a mishmash. The other piece of it is, is we're still receiving full funding for all of this, are we not? And I know from experience in regards to Google Classrooms, there's Google meetings that allow to go live, where a teacher can record a video lesson and allow the students to review it, and then they can open up to actually have an interactive piece with the whole classroom so that those who need support or need clarification on the video or lesson that's delivered, they still have that ability. Because if not, what it sounds like is, is then the expectation is left on the student. And I think trustee O'Brien touched on it, which was, are the parents then going to have to do it? You know, we're not necessarily up to, up to, up to speed on what the curriculum is and what's being taught. So is the expectation then for the teachers to also, for the parents to take the lesson so that they can help support their children at home? I know it's, it's all of us in this together. However, I think we need to have some sort of consistency straight across.
Director Daly?
I'm not sure if there was a question there, and I don't disagree with any of the comments that you raised, trustee Guzzo. We certainly do want to achieve equity across all of our classrooms as much as we can. There's lots of different issues around equity with regards to access, but I think what you're talking about is maybe more what we're expecting teachers to deliver in terms of instruction. There's no doubt, although I don't know if I would use the term mishmash, we'll certainly be starting off uneven. All boards will be. So certainly any of our publicly funded boards, it's certainly with the directors that I've talked with, we're all facing those same challenges. We're all trying to work through them as teachers become more comfortable in teaching, for many of our teachers, in a completely different way than they're used to. It will take some time to engage all of those different types of components of either the Google platform or D2L. We are committed to assisting our teachers in getting better at instruction in all of those formats, in particular, the D2L format. That's what we're committing to. We're certainly not leaving it to parents to teach their children the curriculum, but it's going to be a work in progress. That's, that's what I can say right now.
Trustee Agnew. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Yeah, sorry, just bear with me one second. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So this is probably not unexpected that I'm going to ask this question, and I more than likely be directed towards Superintendent Supriano. But from a, from a spec ed perspective, and I did see, you know, I did see the email that came out today, and I've noticed in the report, you know, that we're continuing to work on what this is going to look like for those students in our spec ed department. But, you know, I'm, and I don't know that there's a question here, I'm just putting out this comment. You know, I think it's important for everyone to acknowledge that for a number of our students, the role that the EAs play. And, you know, we can't simply ask some of our students, like our neurotypical students, to go and work at the kitchen table for two hours on an assignment that they've been given. That's not going to happen with some of the students that we have in our spec ed system that receive so much support from the EA or from the classroom teacher. You know, we're looking at probably a little bit about what trustee Guzzo said, you know, we're not educators, spec ed parents are not educators, a lot of these students require technology, assistive technology hand over hand, they require scribes, you know, and there are parents that are still working full time, all day, every day. And I'm just, when we talk about equity and we talk about equal access, I know that that's going to vary. I know that we're not going to be ready to rock and roll with our spec ed students by April the 6th for distance learning by any capacity. But I think I need to understand a little bit more around how are we looking to support these students from a curriculum perspective who are used to having full-time EA support, and parents who are not able to, say, support the assistive technology that they're using or take three hours out of their day to sit with them and work through a lesson that the teacher's been giving them? We have things like modified curriculums to deal with. So the spec ed piece is a little bit concerning to me. So I'm wondering, you know, maybe Superintendent Supriano, if you can just give some, some overall comments on what that's looking like.
Superintendent Supriano, you have the floor.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'll give you a little bit more of an update. I did send out earlier today an outline of our clinical work that's happening in our schools from our clinical staff. Let me update you on the special education side of special education, the educational side of it. So our consultants have been working with our school certs in virtual teams this past week, planning for student support at the school level. We prepared for school cert resources in some direction for students who access alternative programming. This is for classroom teachers, for life skills teachers. We've also sent out some reminders around our IEP engine. Thankfully, we've changed over to a new IEP engine, which allows for a lot more virtual type support so that teachers and certs can work from the IEP remotely. We've given specific direction to all of our school certs that they must touch base with each of their families on their caseloads and find out specifically what some, some needs may be. Because we recognize that, you know, from a special education perspective, it's going to be very different virtually, because as trustee Agnew indicated, a lot of the work that special education staff do during regular school is, is hand, hand over hand, face to face, supporting students in a very real time way. And so that's going to be, that's, we're hoping to try and replicate that as best we can during this distance learning. From an EA perspective, let me give you just some updates from an EA perspective. So our EA managers and our special education consultants have been meeting with our EA teams, actually all week. So our EAs as a whole have been very receptive to be meeting on this platform, this team platform. So different families of schools, a whole bunch of EAs with their EA manager that manages that group, and this consultants have been meeting this week to talk about some of the challenges that they're going to face and some of the, the work that they're going to be looking at in this, in this new work that we're, we're headed into. We've reminded all of our EA group that this period of school closure is a paid time for them. We've had a great relationship with the EA unions and the union leadership. They recognize that we're trying to find what best works for, for EAs and for students to support students with EA support. We've, we've provided tasks and asked administrators, principals, special education, school teams, teachers to kind of brainstorm some ideas of where we can best utilize our EAs to support student learning and find barriers that might be there for some of our EAs and try and overcome those barriers. We've communicated to all of our EAs to expect to be invited to school staff meetings, special education department meetings, meetings, or EA-related meetings with school and board staff. We've asked them all to connect with their cert, their department heads with messaging that they're available for EA-related tasks while at home. So some of the things that we're looking at are things like face-to-face in real time with students to do story or book reading with them, site work, simple math, for example, with some of our students that require that. The parameters that we're setting for them is that EAs should not be the first contact with families. This type of interaction must be set up through the cert, through the teacher, and directed by the cert to the EA to include what materials can be approved to be supported. And obviously, only using the board-approved platforms, whether they be Microsoft Teams, D2L Brightspace, or Google Classrooms. I can tell you that this is all our plan. I know that things will change, probably as we start getting into the midst of it by the end of this week and early into next week. It is obviously very, very different and unique for EAs especially, in how they can support our student learners, because a lot of the work they do is, is physical and face-to-face. So we are evolving, and it probably will evolve, and probably by the next time that we meet as a board, I, I will very likely have some updates on what this is looking like in our schools.
Trustee Agnew, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you so much, Camilo. You know, just one of the things that I sort of touched on was with respect to tech. And I know that we, you know, there was a conversation earlier on, trustee Swan had mentioned about access to tech, and Director Daly spoke about it. You know, it's going to be a little bit different for some of our spec ed students. You know, the technology is often very specific technology that specific people have been trained on. So I guess it's a twofold question. So one would be around access to that technology and who's going to support it. Will there be an opportunity for parents to be involved in some of that learning, should they wish, to, to try to, you know, learn the system? And the second piece is from other equipment perspectives. So, you know, I know that our policy is not solid on using walkers, things like that. But if, if children need those in the course of their day, and those are items that are at the school, will they have access to those as well? Anyways, yes.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee Agnew. So to put your mind at ease, so CEA equipment, so again, just a quick refresher. So our CEA equipment, which is, could be IT, technology, laptops, iPads, a lot of, in our board, a lot of it is Chromebooks. And then CEA also refers to mobility equipment, walkers, bikes, standards. Because the purpose of CEA equipment is to access education, you're, you're correct that over summer, summer holidays and March breaks, we typically do not lend this, this equipment out, because the idea is that summer and March break is not education time. But because we are in the midst of a, of a distance learning environment, it is educational time. So we are in the process, working with our CEA team and all of our school certs, we're in the process of collecting information at all of our schools, the amount of equipment that we have, technology, laptops, iPads, from a special education perspective, and also the other side of the CEA equipment, mobility, bikes, standards, walkers. And we're, so, so part one is collecting that information. Part two is, once we get the okay through public health to allow the distribution of that equipment to families, I know that our superintendent of medical, Stephanie Ballow and Ryan Merrick, our superintendent of facilities, have been working to put the plan together for staff to enter our buildings. Equally, they're working on a, on a, a process for, for families to collect equipment, technology, if and when that time comes from public health that we give, we're given the okay to do so. We, by, by that time, again, I'm not, I, I'm not going to speculate when that, when that day is, we will be ready with an inventory of the equipment and to be able to, to deliver it or to provide it to families so they can use that equipment in their, in the support of their students with special needs at home. With regard to your question about having, you know, families, for some of our families, they might need support themselves, again, it'll be through our school certs. In a lot of, in, in a lot of ways, in some ways, as I mentioned, our EAs are, are faced with a very unique time in that a lot of their work is face-to-face. For our certs, the majority of the students that they support, they support them indirectly through classroom teachers. And so that, in some ways, for school certs, a lot of their work will be, again, I use this term very loosely, business as usual, that they will be supporting students and parents. So in the way that they would support teachers with technology, they can easily support families with technology, either through email, through phone conversations, or for some who feel comfortable in real time in sites like Team Sites.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions. One was a question from a parent. Their child is in grade 12, and we know the situation right now, but the parents are worried since the child is going to, to graduate soon and going to university. So the university will probably understand the situation because everybody is in the same situation. But they wanted to know how the child would be, whether the child would be ready technically, I mean, curriculum-wise, to, to get into university? And is the board having any discussions with the Ministry of Universities or the Minister of Universities? Is there any communication for students going from grade 12 to university? Is there some kind of discussion happening? That's my first question. And second thing was, was the teachers, some teachers are up and running, whereas some are techni, are not really up, up to speed right now because of technical challenges and stuff like that. But shortly, there will be, and Secretary Daly answered some of the questions there. But is there any kind of mechanism for monitoring the work the teachers are going to be doing with, with the classes? Is somebody going to be checking? Is the principal going to be on the communication? Or is the, are the SOs going to be on the communication? What, what's, what's happening on, on that? Could, could Secretary Daly answer that question?
You have the floor, Secretary.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, to the first question regarding concerns for our graduating students from high school, certainly for students who are hoping to graduate to college or university next year. I understand the concerns and the, the stress that they're feeling. The Ministry of Education has been in constant contact with the Ontario Universities and Ontario Colleges around, particularly around upcoming dates. Typically, right now, we'd be get, be getting ready to submit our midterm marks, which many students would, would be using as supplemental information for, for their applications. We haven't had a firm commitment from either the Ontario Universities or the colleges yet as to how that will kind of play out, but the deputy minister has spoken to us about that a number of times. So the Ministry of Education is in contact with, with colleges and universities. Our high school teachers will be required to submit some midterm mark by the end of April, so that'll help inform some of those application processes as well. So that conversation's ongoing with the colleges and universities. With regards to the second question, which I think was around trustee Duarte, it was with teachers who are up and ready to go and, oh, sorry, it was, was how will, how will, how will be able to monitor some of the work that, that our teachers are doing? Certainly for our teachers who are using D2L classrooms, administrators do have access to what the teachers are doing. So they, they, they will be invited into those classrooms to see the types of engagement that's going on, assignments that are being sent home, et cetera. We'll be asking our principals to check in terms of Google Classrooms that the, the teachers will need to report back to principals as well in, in terms of, in terms of where they're at in their instruction.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. Pat, this is two questions from a parent. One, say we have like a grade nine art class where the kids need to produce something, will the parents be expected to come up with the materials and will they get reimbursed for those materials? And the second question is, subjects like co-op and auto shop, are they going to continue?
Trustee Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you and few, through you, Mr. Chair. I'll talk about co-op first and then go back to the other kind of more performance-based high school courses. So obviously with, in the current situation, our co-op students can't continue or haven't been continuing in their, in their in-person community in their in-person community placement. So the direction that we received via memo today from the ministry was while we're still in this extended closure, that students can work with their co-op teachers to work through some other curricular expectations. We're hopeful that we're feasible. Students can have opportunities to connect virtually with industry partners in career exploration activities, experiential learning activities. I know we do have our, some of our staff working with Superintendent McGilliguddy, our pathway staff working on those types of activities. For our more performance-based credits, so art, whether it's visual art or music or some of our tech courses, that's something that we are working with our subject councils around ways that students will be able to demonstrate some of their products. Certainly if it required parents or students having to purchase something in order to facilitate that, that would have to be something that we'd need to support. But those conversations and that planning is going on amongst our tech teachers and department heads. I'm not sure if Superintendent McGilliguddy could add anything to that, but I'll, through you, Mr. Chair, ask him to weigh in if there's anything else he can add.
Superintendent McGilliguddy, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I would only add, Director Daly, that opportunities have been afforded to instructors to focus a little bit more on the theoretical aspects of some of those performance-based subjects during this time period. But then there would also be, through the use of students, be able to submit some of the things that they can do in terms of on video of themselves doing projects at home would also be something that they would be looking to submit and have evaluated. Thank you.
Student trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Okay, so I just, oh, thank you very much through you, Mr. Chair. I just have, I think, two questions just relating to assessments. And the reason why I post this is because I kind of know the difficulties of handling assessments on online platforms. So has the minister kind of directed kind of the boards on how to proceed with these? The handling of these assessments such as tests, exams, and so forth?
Through you, Mr. Chair, not as of yet. I would anticipate, although we haven't got this direction yet, that at the secondary level, final exams may be replaced by course culminating activities. So that's a possibility. That's a little bit time-dependent on where we end up. Certainly, the minister in his press conference today did express some hope that we'd be able to get back into school at some point before the end of the school year. In an ideal world, if we were able to safely do it at the beginning of May, that would still afford us some time around different types of assessments. But for the time being, trustee Swan, I think those assessments, certainly at the high school level, around project base or written assignments would proceed as they would kind of in a face-to-face environment.
Thank you very much, Director Daly. And my second question is, unless another trustee has already addressed this, it's really about how is the minister approaching or addressing full-day kindergarten? Because if I'm not mistaken, they are assessed by observation.
Trustee Daly?
I mean, Secretary Daly.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask for a little bit of help from Superintendent Porcasin if she could talk to some of the ideas we've got around our full-day kindergarten students.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. With regard to kindergarten, we do have a teaching team of consultants that are going to be advising our kindergarten teachers as to how to proceed. We also are encouraging our kindergarten teachers to learn about the D2L platform. And we understand that this is going to be probably extremely difficult from a K to three perspective. It really will not be able to function without parental support, obviously. And it is something that we're working through now with our teams and finding ways in which to communicate. As I said, the ministry has been very vague with regard to the nature of assessment and evaluation and feedback with regard to what that will look like. But we will find a way to navigate it during this time as a team. And we have a number of earlier specialists on our consultant team who are already looking at opportunities and ways in which teachers will be able to, and DCEs, because there is a K-teaching team in kindergarten, will be able to proceed to do that form of evaluation. But I also want to again reiterate that the kindergarten to grade three is going to be challenging and will most certainly be dependent upon parental support.
Okay, thank you. So I just, I think I might be at the end of the queue if I have a follow-up question.
You've had your follow-up, so you want to follow up to the follow-up?
Oh, sorry, like another question altogether, okay.
Yeah, I just said that you have a follow-up to the follow-up, so I'm allowing you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my other question is, so we already have students that already have access to Google Classroom. So just to clarify, are we saying that the students who are currently using Google Classroom will be moving to D2L? Is that what I'm hearing correctly or?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, trustee Swan, just to clarify. For teachers who currently weren't using a learning management system, we're encouraging them to use D2L because we can best support that. But for teachers who are already on another platform and typically it's Google, those teachers will continue to use that platform.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back to the D2L platform. I had a parent ask me, I guess she was more versed in it, whether teachers are going to be encouraged to help structure the student's day using the calendar funk in the D2L platform? I guess she's looking for help in structuring the child's day as she's working and has little kids at home, or smaller kids, I think, grade five. And I have another question after that.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we're going to be working with our teachers. We know that teacher readiness is a reality that we need to address. That's true in all of our boards. So we will be encouraging teachers, as they become more comfortable with the platform, to use as many different functions as they can to best support our students.
Okay, thank you. And I guess in the midst of all this, and you know, there's a lot of focus on math and literacy, and just to remind and include, for the teachers, to include the prayer time and faith initiatives during this time. Starting lessons or to, you know, to bring the, you know, vision of hope and trust in God and resilience and adapting to, you know, situations, which just, you know, to mention that, that our faith is going to, we need our faith during this time, that the teachers take advantage of that lesson for the students. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Carabella. Absolutely. Thanks for that.
Before we move on, we have three minutes. We need a motion to extend. So I will take trustee O'Hern Zernota's question. After that, we will need a motion to extend. So trustee O'Hern Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and to Director Daly. Just listening to all the comments and all the questions and knowing in my day life how it's hard to plan these things because they're changing, albeit daily, probably hourly. I'm just wondering, if I just want to throw it out there to my colleagues and maybe up to the Chair, Vice Chair, and Director to discuss, there are so many questions and so many answers that aren't there yet because there's no playbook. We've never been through this before. Then maybe we can have a quick meeting between now and our next board meeting just to get a quick update. Not to drill the school board, but just to get an update in case we're getting questions from our stakeholders when it starts on April the 6th.
Yeah, certainly. If that's, I guess I'll weigh in. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm certainly available to meet. This is probably an easy format to meet. If we want to schedule some time to give an update, I'll leave that up to the Chair and the Vice Chair to coordinate with trustees, but I'm happy to update in any way I can.
Trustees, thank you for the question. And yes, we will coordinate and get an update. I understand. Trustee O'Brien, you have a motion to extend?
Yes.
So trustee O'Brien, do we have a motion to extend beyond 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Do we have a second there?
Okay.
Trustee Duarte, all in favor? Actually, let me take a vote on it. Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Trustee, student trustee Keretao?
In favor.
Trustee, student trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Bambra?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Motion carries. Let's continue on to the next question. Trustee O'Brien, did you have a question?
Thank you through Mr. Chair to Superintendent Cipriano. Camilo, you've addressed the way we're going to go with some of our needs students. What about mental health needs? Are there any supports out there for our kids that is specifically their issue? Thank you.
Trustee Cipriano, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Brien. So mental health, I had sent out earlier today, I'd referenced our clinical staff, outlined some of what our clinical staff were doing. But let me highlight some of the areas around mental health. So sorry, I just want to kind of get to that. We have streamlined our mental health supports for our schools where in the past, obviously, parents could always reach out to our staff at schools, principals or teachers, if they feel their child needs some support in mental health, whether that be through CYCs in all of our schools, elementary and secondary, or social workers. In the past, the process that was created from a privacy perspective required a lot of different signatures for parents to give permission for schools and staff to work with their children. We have streamlined that now that it's only required a verbal consent. So a principal only requires a verbal consent if the parent has some concerns about their child or if a student themselves reaches out to a staff member with some anxieties that they may have around either, you know, during this time or about classes in particular. We've been working, all of our clinical staff, our CYCs, our social workers, our psychologists, and including also our speech and language pathologists, they're all, during this week, receiving telehealth training. Providing clinical support in a virtual environment is very different than providing support in a face-to-face environment. So we decided as a special education team to get this training for all of our clinicians who work with students and some with families as well. And so they're in the midst of that training this week. They will be able to support students in real time. All students that are currently on caseloads of social workers and CYCs are getting that support when students reach out to those social workers. Our social workers are reaching out themselves to our most needy students, especially in secondary school, touching base to see how they're doing during this time. And then finally, sorry, just around, I lost my train of thought. So ultimately, we are providing similar supports that we've been in the past. Again, it's a little bit unique because it is virtual. It is in real time. Oh, sorry, one final thought that I just remembered. We're working with our new privacy manager, Mark Grishik, I believe his last name is. And we're trying to find a telehealth platform that meets all the requirements from a privacy perspective. So when we get to the point where we can support students and need to support students, that we can do so in a safe, private environment that is conducive to providing mental health supports for students.
Thank you. That's awesome, Camilo. Thank you.
So Secretary Daly has a comment to make. Secretary Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and somewhat related to some of the comments that Superintendent Cipriano mentioned. One of the things that our staff is spending a lot of time on, not just Spec Ed staff, but all of our staff, we're being inundated with all kinds of resources, both for teachers and for parents. So we're really trying to curate those resources so they're ones that we can support from a board perspective that we think are helpful to parents and teachers as well. So the access to those resources will look a little bit different in the next day or so for our parents. So we're certainly trying to make where they'll find stuff on our board website to be much cleaner and organized in a different way that they'll be able to kind of point and click. So we're working on that as well.
Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and just to kind of, to go back on that, I understand the whole free resource thing. However, one of the free resources that was offered and I think would be helpful was the online access to any of the Nelson textbooks, which are a majority of the textbooks that our students use today in the curriculum, particularly in elementary school. And I know it was provided to all boards. I was just wondering if that's going to be communicated out directly because some of the directives that have been given to, like some of the emails that have gone to the parents have been, you know, continue on with your math assignment or your lessons while you're waiting for something to come online. Is that something that as a board we can actually be sharing or directing each principal to do?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and ask Superintendent Porcasin to talk about some of those text resources if she can.
Superintendent Porcasin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question. We have developed through our library services department, also in collaboration with our FOI manager, Mark, to ensure that we are in keeping with copyright and what is available to everyone. We are making the library e-resources document available to our administrators and we want to spend some time to ensure that what is being provided is accurate. She has done, Lynda Murray, who is our system librarian and manager of library services, has done the research with regard to where we are with what companies are providing access to resources during this time and what resources are available, particularly in our secondary area. We do have some textbooks that may be dated and may not be accessible online. But overall, Nelson, Pearson, and Thompson have made resources available and digital resources free. So as teachers are preparing their distance learning information, they will be able to access this information as they need to do so by taking screenshots of what's necessary as well. And with parents having the opportunity to access resources if need be, online as provided. So the answer to the question is yes, we are sharing it. But we're not prepared to send it out for public consumption at this time until we've had our teachers had an opportunity to look at it along with our administrators. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Superintendent Porcasin. Follow-up question from trustee Guzzo. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Superintendent Porcasin. I can appreciate that, you know, when there's lots of other things that need to be vetted, to make sure for the accuracy. However, there has been communication, like I said, from teachers to saying, follow up on your workbooks. Some students don't have that at home and I'm not sure why we wouldn't share the fact that these textbooks are available online. I've actually had that these textbooks are available online. I've actually had parents contact me asking where they can purchase them. And I raised this question last week. I had sent it through an email. I believe it was as of last Tuesday, they had offered it free. So we're now a week later, and I just, I just don't understand why we wouldn't share that information at this point, particularly if there are textbooks that are being used in their classrooms. And, you know, I struggle with the fact that, you know, I appreciate that all of this takes time and nobody predicted that this would happen, but I struggle with the fact that we have parents who are working, we have two income families that are at home working and trying to navigate through this with children at home and are trying to keep their children occupied and not necessarily on electronics 24/7. So I just don't understand if there's something that they can have them do, whether it even be reviewing what they've already done. They don't necessarily have access to these textbooks because they didn't know to take them home. Nobody predicted that, you know, it would, it would end up to be this long, but I just don't understand why we wouldn't share that with everybody and say, look, these are the textbooks we use. If you want to review, here you go. Here's the information.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. After Director Daly responds, we will move on to agenda item 10.3.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. I guess all I can respond, trustee Guzzo, is that we are working to make resources available to parents in a way that we think makes best sense. And we are trying to work through that. I guess that's all I can say at this point.
Agenda item 10.3. Moving on, secretary Daly, you still have the floor. Can you please provide us information on field trips moving forward?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. So this would be the point of our regular agendas where superintendents would go through field trips that are upcoming. We've, as a senior team, we've met, we met earlier this week to try and determine how we would, we'd look at field trips going out through the rest of the school year. We came to the determination that we'll be cancelling overnight trips, any that hadn't been cancelled at this point, as well as day trips. So we haven't communicated that to our principals yet because I wanted to let you know first. But moving forward, all of those trips will be cancelled.
Thank you, secretary Daly. Agenda item 10.4. Vice Chair Duarte, can you speak to your extracurricular engagement, past and present, as it pertains to math and science?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Our role as trustees is to provide programming support for all around well-being of our students, which means we need to provide opportunities for learning, developing, and growth of all our students. So we are performing quite well where it comes, where it concerns the curriculum. And this is evident with our EQO schools over the past few years where our students have achieved better than provincial levels. Over the past year and a half, we have intensely discussed, debated, and hopefully laid to rest some interest in the French program. So to me, all programs are equally important, but now I would like to propose to my fellow colleagues that we need to choose an area where we already are in and take it to the next level, specifically our math and science extracurricular activities and competitions for elementary and high school grades. Not to say that math and science is the only thing, we'll move on to art sometime down the road. But for now, I'm thinking of math and science, which I'm proposing. So my, so some schools across our board participate in math STEM competitions, while some run school clubs. This is a totally volunteer thing, and a lot depends on the principal, teachers, teacher interests, funds available. Some schools use parent council funds, student interest, et cetera. There is no uniformity across our system, and most of our competitions are high school focused. I'm sure we have children in every school and they have interest in math and science. However, if resources are not available, we deny them the opportunity to ignite the flame of curiosity, creativity, and innovation in our students, which should start from elementary school. Competitions are an important part of learning math and science and are a fun activity for students of all ages. The Government of Canada, and I did my research, has recognized the importance of math and science and has committed to STEM-related initiatives aimed at increasing the participation of Canadians in STEM. On their website, they list local, national, international competitions and resources for math and science. Many of these resources make grants available to encourage participation. And I've been hearing that there is some new funding for special ed and STEM, and we could take advantage of that, too. So, Mr. Chair, I would like to propose to our trustees, and I'm thinking about a few things about extracurricular activities. I would like to know what we have done the past year, not this year, but the past year. What programs have been conducted in math and science? What was our participation in math and science competitions locally, nationally, internationally? Something like the Bay Area Science Fair. I've been to that a couple of times. I love what our kids are doing, but not all schools are participating there. So how can we provide the opportunity and encouragement to our students uniformly across all schools to participate and compete within the school, within a group of schools and region? This is similar to the English and French public speaking competitions we have, where each school has a competition, and then it goes to the group of schools, and then it goes to a regional level. So I'm thinking in those terms, how can we encourage math and science for kids? How can we uniformly encourage participation of every school, not just live voluntarily? How can we make them participate in local, regional university, national shows and competitions? Have we explored the opportunities that are available locally, regionally, nationally? And since this is a budget time, this is a great time to put it out, get the feedback from people, and see if we can budget for math and science programs, STEM programs in school. Mr. Chair, I'd like to leave it for a small discussion, discussion to the trustees.
We will now open the discussion. Are there any questions, trustees? There's no questions? No question? Patrick, trustee Murphy, you have a question, and you have the floor.
I don't necessarily have a question. It's more of a comment to build on what trustee Duarte has commented. As we know, the future is going to be in STEM as technology is growing. And, you know, I heard a statistic that 75% of the jobs that exist today didn't exist 20 years ago. So we know that the students going through our system more than likely will have employment in the technology field. So I think it's, I think it's an important initiative. You know, like all things, though, we need, you kind of need a maniac with a mission. You need somebody who, who within our board could spearhead this and really takes it on and drives the initiative and can bring all of those. It's multi-disciplined. So it's hard just to have an effective program if we don't have that, that single source to drive it. So I think, I think that's something that we should also be looking at is, is how can we spearhead this program and make it a priority? It's also an opportunity for our board to have, you know, be our unique selling feature, right? This is, this would give us an opportunity if we specialize in this field. We could draw in more students to our, to our board and more revenue to our board and enhance the student life here. Thank you.
Any other question? Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Duarte, for bringing this up for discussion. And looks like you've done some good homework. And I think what's important is to assess what's happening and seeing the inconsistencies and seeing how we can see what's working really well and try and replicate it elsewhere. So that's, that's a really good point to see what's, what's already happening. And you mentioned that the government now is also, has made some statements about STEM. Do you have further information about that, or does the superintendent have information about what the government is going to provide?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I could answer, Mr. Chair. So if you go to the Government of Canada website, it's got a separate site for STEM, and they are proposing, they see the future of our youth. I mean, exploring their creativity and taking the initiative to develop new products and new ideas. So they are funding separately for this thing. So a lot of information on the government website, including funding resources.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, trustee Duarte, for bringing this up. What I really like is the fact that you included extracurricular. I know from my experience as a teacher, the research really points to the fact that extracurricular has sometimes even a greater effect on career choice and career success. So whatever initiative this takes us, I think we must include the extracurricular component. Thank you.
Student trustee Swan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank trustee Duarte for bringing this up. As a former Bay Area Science and Engineering Fair participant, as well as going to the Canada Wide Science Fair twice, I understand kind of the importance of STEM in our schools and really, unfortunately, kind of how lacking it is in our board. And I think that one of the main ways that we really have to push forward with this is really more funding. I think that like extracurriculars such as Bay Area Science and Engineering Fair, they require quite a, quite a bit of investment in trying to investigate, trying to innovate. And also, we do need to reach out to other students who have also taken the same pathway. There have been multiple students from the Halton Catholic School Board who have participated in these fairs before. And I think, and they've gone on to study in local universities and even judge the fair once. So they understand how important this is. I think it's really about outreach, making sure that we have, for instance, like mentors so that we can guide students through these opportunities. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa has the floor.
It's more of a, it's more of a comment rather than a question. I want to commend you, trustee Duarte, for bringing up this. I must admit that it's quite a surprise to me that we don't have anything more formal in place, especially when it regards to, you know, local, provincial, even national competitions. In the end, that's what, you know, this is an opportunity for students, our students population to showcase themselves and their ambitions. So I would, I would very, very willingly back any initiatives behind this. I think somebody has to take and champion it to trust you, Murphy's point, but you've got my support, no question.
Trustee Duarte, it's back to you. You have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on this, on this particular topic. Is Rosie, I send a motion to Rosie. Can Rosie share the screen and put it up if she's there? Rosie, do you get the motion?
Yes. Do you see it on the screen?
Yes. Can you zoom in, please, while I read the motion? Okay, I'd like to read the motion, Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees give instructions to its secretary and director of education to prepare and present to the Board of Trustees on April 21st, 2020, a detailed report outlining the current co-curricular and extracurricular events being conducted in elementary and secondary math and science. The report should include the level of student participation in local, regional, university, national, and international competitions for the past academic year. Be it further resolved, that a plan be presented to the board for review, which includes the initiatives that support and encourage participation in local, regional, university, national shows, and competitions in math and science, along with STEM initiatives moving forward.
So I have a, Director Daly has the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, and with all due respect to trustee Duarte's motion, that motion's asking for a report to be brought back in two weeks. In terms of our staff right now, it is all hands on deck to try and support teachers to get up to speed in terms of distance learning. So I guess if I could make a request, it would be to push out that date a little bit so that we can kind of keep our eye on the ball in terms of trying to support our students through distance learning. It's just a suggestion.
So trustee Duarte, do you wish to amend your date of April the 2nd?
Yes, I'd like to ask through you, Mr. Chair, what date would be convenient for secretary to get this? And the earlier the better.
Well, to be, to be honest with you, trustee Duarte, I'm not going to be the person that's doing the report. So maybe if I could ask for a little bit of input from Superintendent Percassin to start with. I think it wouldn't be a whole lot of work to let you know some of the events that we're already in. But in terms of devising a plan going forward, that's really where more of the work would come. And to be honest with you, that might be something that gets addressed in the next strategic planning process, if that's really a direction that trustees are looking for the board to pursue. But maybe I'll, through you, Mr. Chair, ask if Superintendent Percassin could weigh in.
Superintendent Percassin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. With regard to timelines, as Director Daly mentioned, we are extremely focused upon supporting teachers. And I want to be very mindful that in collaboration with student success staff focused on literacy, numeracy at secondary, that gives us approximately less than 15 people to support almost 2,000 teachers in our board, not suggesting that all of them will require support, but we are very limited insofar as what we're able to do. I am certainly not shirking any responsibility or accountability in producing any report. Pleased to do it. I simply cannot predict when it could be ready. I do understand that this is probably related to budget, and therefore, I, I don't know that, you know, if we want to say that it could be ready sometime in May, perhaps I can make that kind of commitment. But again, I'm reticent to commit staff to a lengthy report and especially a report on what we have been doing and what we've been involved in in the last while. That certainly isn't something that would be difficult to do. We can do that with our subject councils. Having said that, a full, a fulsome plan of what this will look like from an extracurricular perspective is something that's, I believe, a lot more complex and perhaps to be looked at over a longer period of time and involve definitely a few more stakeholders than just the teachers, the department heads, et cetera.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? I can't hear you.
Just, I just want to inform the trustees that we're reaching 10:30, and after this question, we will have to have a motion to extend. So the floor right now belongs to trustee Agnew. So trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, a brief comment. I'm certainly supportive of what it is that trustee Duarte is recommending here. And I've heard all the comments about the validity and the importance of moving this forward. I just want to reiterate that I think the timing is off. We are struggling, as we just spoke about earlier, with trying to get our distance learning up and running. We don't know what's coming down from the ministry after May the 4th. We can't support our spec ed students effectively at this time with a definitive plan. And I just, you know, if we're going to go ahead and do this, I think we need to do it the right way, especially for planning and budgeting purposes. So, you know, I'd like to see us push this out as far as we can. Certainly not ignoring it at all, trustee Duarte. It is extremely important. But I just think it's a difficult time for staff to be focusing on this when we have just heard how stretched our resources are to meet this unprecedented situation that we're in currently, unfortunately.
Mr. Chair?
Am I on?
Hang on a second. Before I give you the floor again, trustee Duarte, we have secretary Daly that wishes to weigh in. Secretary Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe, I guess my question, would it be possible to maybe split the motion? I think the first part- I think the first part of the motion, where we could bring back is an information report, the types of activities that our students in our schools are involved in now. Maybe we could do that as the first part of the report and then kind of gauge where we're at and set a date for the second part of the report. I'm just wondering if that would be acceptable.
Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Mr. Chair, I'm totally open to any suggestion. What I'm really intending to do is get the ball rolling and put some dates there. I'm open to any suggestions. Basically, we don't have anything on the table right now. So I want to put something on the table. Maybe what Secretary Daly is suggesting is acceptable. Provide us the first part of the motion and then the second part, maybe end of May or end of June, it's fine. But I want to get the ball rolling.
So, okay, so let's go back to your motion, Trustee Duarte. You have April 21st. Do you wish to amend that to another date then?
Yes, since Secretary Daly is agreeable to April 21st for the first part, I'd like to leave that the same.
Excuse me, excuse me. So you misunderstood. So we need to amend April 21st to extend it by approximately four weeks? May 4th, how's that?
That's fine. I'm good with that.
So amending, so can you please amend April 21st to April the 4th? Or May the 4th, excuse me?
May 4th.
Let me ask.
Okay, you'll get your turn in a moment, Trustee DeRosa. All right, so then, so hang on. So the second portion of your, of your motion, do you wish to put a date on it too?
Yes, I don't mind putting a date, but I'd really like staff to focus on what they're doing right now and then get this done simultaneously. So what is the realistic date which Secretary Daly can get this done? And there's no, I mean, if at all we need a little more time, we can really revisit it again at some point in time and get the ball rolling.
So let me give the floor to Trustee Agnew. Please, go ahead, Trustee Agnew.
Was I not in line?
Nope, not me. So, okay, hold on, Trustee DeRosa. It's not me, so I think we need to back down through the row. We need to go back down and see who was there. But it wasn't me, but thank you, Mr. Chair.
So I'm just waiting to see. They're going to look at the queue and I'll be back to you in a moment, Trustee DeRosa.
We also need to take a vote, Mr. Chair, about extending.
Yes, we do. So let's, until we check the queue, can I have a motion to extend that we require unanimous consent to move forward? Do I have a mover to extend?
I'll move.
Trustee DeRosa, seconder. Trustee Duarte. So now I will go around the room. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Swan?
In favor.
Trustee Karatao?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Student trustee Bambara?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Okay, motion carries.
And me, I'm in favor.
Well, you're the move, okay, Trustee Duarte. You're in favor, so it's unanimous. Let's continue. So you want the second part of your motion, you want to put a date on it? What is the date?
I'd rather ask Secretary Daly to give us a date because I want him to focus on the work he's doing right now with his staff. And end of May is fine for me, or June. So it's up to him to get the ball rolling.
I guess, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. My suggestion might be that we bring the initial report back on May 4th. And then we could probably give you a better understanding of when the next date could be met. So in some ways, the resolution could stay as it is, where the first part of the report is May 5th and then the more fulsome part could be after that. I guess my only request would be, if we're going to put a date on the second part and we find that we can't bring something that's really worthwhile to the board by that date, that we'd be given a little bit of latitude there. I don't know if that makes sense.
So, Trustee Duarte, would you consider stating that, subject to the report received May 5th, we will revisit it at that time?
Agreed.
Good. So perhaps Executive Secretary Rosie can, oh yes, she's doing it in real time.
This is perfect.
Okay, so, Trustee Duarte, can you please read the second portion of your motion?
Be it further resolved that, subject to the May 5th, 2020 staff report, a plan be presented to the board for review, which includes the initiatives that support and encourage participation in local, regional, university, national shows and competitions in math and science, along with STEM initiatives moving forward.
Okay, so, Trustee Duarte, you moved that motion. I'm going to need a seconder.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee Murphy. I will now take it to a vote. Trustee DeRosa.
I'm in favor, but I had hoped to put in a comment, but it's irrelevant. That's okay. I was lined up. My suggestion was to receive the report in its entirety at a date that is not May, but probably into June, and that would be adjusted as required, if necessary, with the staff, to see what the progress of the staff. The staff is very busy dealing with.
So, so I think if you're.
But at this stage of the game, if we've agreed on that, that's fine. I support it.
I think though, Trustee DeRosa, I think if you read the second portion of that particular motion, that's exactly what it states. It states it's subject to, it's subject to the report we receive in May the 5th, 2020, after which time we revisit it and set a different timetable.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to argue the point. This is really, I support. I vote in favor of the motion, okay?
Okay, so let's start again. Trustee DeRosa?
In favor.
Student trustee Karatao?
In favor.
Student trustee Swan?
In favor.
Our Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Student trustee Bambara?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte, the motion passes. All right, so you have the floor again. Oh yes, 10.5. Trustee Duarte, can you please speak to the update to the boardroom technology?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an upgrade to the boardroom audio/video system. Colleagues, how many times have we come to our board meetings where one or several of our colleagues are calling in or attending remotely and the equipment is malfunctioning with audio lag, video not working, poor audio quality, audio not audible, no connectivity or dropped calls? I'm sure it's every time, okay? And people who have attempted to call into board meetings have experienced this firsthand. So all these issues are related to the equipment in our boardroom, which is a dinosaur, and we know that, is antiquated. And I believe it's unupgradable again. So the present situation is, when we run meetings for the chair, it's if you're chair of a meeting, you want to stay on track and focused and not fiddle with the mic and your cellphone. For the vice chair, who I am for this year, it is frustrating because I have to help the chair and it's distracting and it's annoying and it's a lot of frustration. For the trustees who are attending the meeting, trustees need to actively participate in meetings. And this is an absolute waste of time and annoyance. Trustees are entitled to have efficient meetings. And for viewers who are viewing this great video livestream, this is a poor image of what we present in this day of technology. We are an education system with this dinosaur. If we upgrade the system, this will definitely increase our board meeting efficiency and productivity. We will overcome the challenge of getting more done in less time because of, by saving on the technical issues that we have. Technology has changed since the dinosaur day and upgrading will be a big win. There are modern-day products offering modern features, which will make our work very easy. Operating costs will be reduced because we not only use this system for our board meetings, but we use it for CAC, policy, CIPIC, and all other meetings besides the regular board activities. This will reduce distractions and allow us all to focus besides making, besides the reduction in errors. So when we call into board meetings and call into meetings that we have, there's going to be clarity and we will fully participate in the meetings happening at the board level. This will help us to work effectively, something that we cannot do right now, share screens, live streaming, et cetera. Old hardware is no longer supported by updates, okay? So as we all know, as technology marches on, we must discard old gear and simply keep moving on. We have latest technology in our classrooms, why not in our boardroom? It is important to look and the impression we give our viewers is also important. This is the right time, this is the budget time. So there are inexpensive, mid-range, and high-end options available. We would like to get trustees' thought on this thing. Using Teams or Zoom that we are doing right now, it's not a solution. This is a temporary stopgap thing. So one of my first tasks as vice chair was to work with the chair and our secretary to see the feasibility of a simple and inexpensive upgrade to the system. We have had multiple meetings and conversations, at least four times, with written requests on these topics. We have spent hundreds of dollars on making phone calls to trustees who have been away on vacation. And so it's now time for an upgrade. The upgrade would have to, would be a great benefit in times like this. And we should not be scrambling to have technology up and running. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to leave this motion, this discussion with trustees and see what trustees think about it. And then if everybody agrees, I'd like to move forward with the motion.
So I think, Trustee Duarte, I think you can put forward your motion and we can get a mover, which is yourself, and a seconder, after which time we're going to take it to a discussion. Are you willing to do that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I've given Rosie the motion. Rosie, could you put it up on the screen, please?
Before the motion goes up, so can I have a mover? So we have Trustee Duarte as the mover. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Trustee DeRosa. Are there any questions? And I'm opening it up to discussion.
Mr. Chair, I've not put the motion as yet.
We've read it.
But we've read it, it's on the screen, okay? So do you wish to read it? So read the motion.
Yes, so the motion is, whereas the boardroom located at HCSB CC office is also the location where public meetings are held and in keeping with section 208.1, subsections 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Education Act, which states that access to proceedings be allowed from remote locations to trustees, whereas current audio/video and data transfer equipment is antiquated and unsatisfactory. Be it resolved that the board give instructions to the secretary of the board to investigate and provide at least three costed reports in camera for the purpose of upgrading the current communication system and replace the same so as to allow seamless remote access with the latest technology, such as speech timing, flow queuing, live streaming, recording, screen sharing, document comparing, et cetera, that has the capability of allowing a minimum of 25 remote users by no later than April 21st regular board meeting and that this technology be capable of relocating to any board office if required. Mr. Chair, the date is again flexible, but I have a reason for putting that.
Okay, so we have a mover and we have a seconder. Are there any questions? Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Trustee Duarte, for bringing this forward. Unfortunately, it's too bad that we're now faced in a crunch to get this moving. I think that this is something that had we been a little bit more proactive on having this in place and implemented, we would be in a much better situation at this time and it would be one less stress that we would have to worry about. But given the current circumstances, and I don't see, even though I know the minister's only announced that we won't be going back to school on May 4th, we're not all ignorant to the fact of what we see on the news every day and what's happening and what the realities may be. And I think that we need to act on this and we definitely have the IT professionals on our board who I'm sure would love the opportunity to jump on, to jump on improving our capabilities. And I think that this is something that we need to look at regardless of what happens in the future, down the future. But that we should also have something that gives us the capability of upgrading as times change. Most products are like that anyways. They give you an option of upgrading, but I don't want to get involved in that piece. I just simply think that it's something that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Trustee Guzzo. Trustee O'Hern Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, this motion is just to go out and get some quotes about what this technology would cost us in this world, correct?
Can I reply, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Duarte, you have the floor.
Thank you, trustees, I'm not. So we have started, we already have started some, but Secretary Daly has already started some work with getting the quotations. This is only for getting the quotes and looking at some of the features that we as trustees would be interested, putting together short, very short report, not really a big report, like just get quotations. You can do a lot of work online nowadays, okay? And present it to the board and we as trustees decide what we want to do and what kind of system do we want, how much do we want to spend? We could spend $5,000 and could spend $100,000 or we could spend in between. So it's up to us to decide. So basically, get the ball rolling again for this and let's move on because we need to do something about this.
Okay, because it's kind of ironic. We need the technology due to the times we're in, but at the same time, our school board is busy trying to get instruction to our children. So it's kind of an ironic situation we find ourselves in. So as long as it's just kind of quotes and coming to us with a number and not having them spend too much time with it, I'm okay with it.
Very good, thank you. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to reiterate those comments and my concerns about not diverting the focus of our staff on the most important issues, which is instruction to our kids in these very unsettled times. So my question is, April 21st, is it realistic? Again, I'd ask Secretary Daly to give an assessment of the realizability of this motion that we're about, that we're discussing. That's it?
So I'll give the floor to Aaron Lobz. Superintendent Aaron Lobz.
He's there somewhere.
No, I couldn't remember the name, Trustee DeRosa.
Yeah, I have those moments.
I'm getting tired.
Yes.
So Superintendent Aaron, could you please provide us with your input?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I guess I have actually a very large concern regarding this request, especially given the timing right now. Our IT staff is stretched very thin trying to get the schools up and running, our staff up and running. I just don't see, unfortunately, the timing, time available to address the issue, definitely by April 21st. Although I can see where Trustee Duarte's coming from with the technology and such, my concern is just the time travel right now. Like I said, we are in a data request, Google Classroom, DDL, remote access. Anything simple as getting technologies, laptops out to the schools, to teachers, to students. I think in a normal situation, when we didn't have to deal with what we're all going through right now, it definitely would be a doable undertaking in the short timeline, but.
Mr. Chair?
So, so, no. So in queue is Trustee, sorry. Director Daly has something to add to this.
Again, I appreciate the motion. Was wondering if we could put May 5th, the board meeting after the April 21st.
that the board meeting after the April 21st one is a date where we could bring it back. Um, so that would be one request, and I'm not sure why it would be brought in camera as opposed to in the public session.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Duarte, do you have the floor?
Yes, second daily, uh, the date you're proposing is okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Number two is why is it brought in camera? Because now we are talking money, we are talking quotations. So I'm not sure if it's appropriate to discuss this in public, but again, if you can throw some light and guidance, uh, should be okay.
Um, so trustee Duarte, as chair, I can tell you, um, if there are three quotation, um, then we can discuss it in public in regular board meeting, because we have to be transparent in our decision.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm willing to change the motion if, if required to discussion in the public.
Correct, so let's move it to the regular board meeting. She's already made the change, and she's also making the change now in real time with the date, May 5th, 2020.
Wonderful.
Trustee Guzzo, you now have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to reiterate, and I understand the timing piece, but one of the things is, is in regards to what's happening, I think that us being able and having the capability to livestream, um, and have these things in place as for us, for our, our stakeholders, I think is a really important piece. And I, and I think, and I thank, um, Bill Krips for, for implementing this, by the way, as he did in the work that he put into getting us onto a livestream, um, and enabling these capabilities. But I, I think that moving forward is definitely something, um, that is advantageous for, for our stakeholders, um, and ensuring that we have the proper technology as well to keep them informed and to be able to, to, um, to participate in these meetings. Um, that's it.
Thank you, trustee Guzzo. So we're now going to move to agenda item 10.6.
Mr. Chair, are we taking a vote on this?
Sorry, yeah, yes. Apologies, again, I'm getting tired. So we have a, uh, we have, it was moved by trustee Duarte. Uh, it was seconded by trustee De Rosa. I will now call a vote. So student trustee Caratao.
Sorry, in favor.
In favor. Student trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Student trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
In favor.
Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor. In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Motion parry, carries. Moving on to agenda item 10.6, strategic planning process. I will take the first portion, after which time director Daly will address you. Trustees, as governors of HCDSB, three of our most important responsibilities are, A, the development and monitoring of the multi-year strategic plan with its focus on student achievement; B, the hiring and performance reviews of secretary, director of education; C, the passage of balanced budgets along with managing our resources. Under the Education Act, school boards must create a multi-year strategic plan consisting of three to five years in duration. The purpose of the multi-year strategic plan is to, so as to set a long-term strategic priorities and goals for the board. This multi-year plan should be based on evidence collected throughout the system to ensure that it has clear purpose so as to be effective and attainable with its duration. The board must use a collaborative process during the multi-year strategic plan formulation and development so that everyone has input, takes ownership, and develops a sense of responsibility for its success. The multi-year strategic plan blueprint starts with policy I-44 Strategic Plan Process, which was put together back in 2016 and is due for review in 2021. Prior to embarking on, on a new multi-year strategic plan setting, the board's direction for the next three to five years, it, in which takes one year to complete, the revised and updated policy will be fundamental to ensuring good governance, build public trust in the Board of Trustees, safeguard our schools so, so, so as they are open, inviting, caring, equitable, innovative, and flexible so that they are responsive to the specific needs of communities that they serve with a focus on faith. It has to contain accountability and measurable outcomes so that we are able to apply it when we perform the yearly review of the secretary to the board and director of education. I will now defer to secretary Daly to speak to his role and steps moving forward. Secretary Daly.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustees will recall that, um, at the January 21st, 2020 board meeting, uh, I did review the strategic planning process uh, that's outlined in our current policy. Um, I believe that our current policy uh, can achieve all of those aims that, uh, that the chair, uh, did, um, did mention in his opening remarks. Uh, I was prepared to bring a motion to board tonight to initiate the first phase, which is the establishment of a steering committee, um, and then a, a review of our current mission, vision, and values. I'm certainly prepared to bring an action item to our next board meeting, uh, if that's the will of the board. Uh, we do need to get, uh, as, as, uh, Chair Yon Tomasi did, did point out, um, this is our, one of our most important roles as, as, or one of your most important roles as a board of trustee, and one of our most important roles as senior staff. Um, so I think we do need to get the, the process uh, in motion. Um, the current, uh, policy that we do have, although it is a number of years old, it did come as a result of the last planning process. So what I, I, I guess I would suggest to trustees is, uh, if we could, if you could either review the current process, um, to see if there's anything that... I, I, I don't think there's anything missing. It does follow, uh, the guide for school board trustees that we currently have. Uh, that's a little bit dated as, as well. Uh, but certainly senior staff is prepared uh, to start the strategic planning process uh, with a motion from the board at our next meeting.
So, uh, trustees, um, let me just, uh, guide you through this a little bit. So I believe that, um, we need to, um, review and update the governing, uh, document, which is policy I-44. Uh, I think that acts as the blueprint of where, um, our director and staff are going to go with putting together the multi-year strategic plan. Um, so my view would be to, uh, review and update policy I-44, after which time we can move forward. I'll open it up for discussion and any questions now. So trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So it could come to the next policy meeting? And when would that be? Is that what you were proposing?
So, well, I'm not proposing anything. I'm leaving it to the board to decide. There's nine of us, and, and we need to vote on it. So, um, we need to review the policy and update it, bring it to current elements that, that we are faced with in education. Um, so again, it's open for discussion, so I'm looking for your input. So the next policy meeting is April 14th. Trustee Guzzo, can we get that? Into our next policy?
I, I didn't realize you were asking me, yeah. Um, we can, if that's a request to put it onto the agenda, um, I will work with, uh, Superintendent Vallow, and we can, we can put it, uh, we can see where it fits in.
Fine, so that's, so that's the first step, and then that'll work with, um, our next board meeting, which, uh, uh, director Daly will come back to us with a motion, um, and if we're ready to move forward, that's what we will do. Uh, trustee De Rosa, you have the floor. Back to having to have a motion, so I need a mover to extend.
I can.
So, uh, moved by trustee Duarte, seconded by? Uh, trustee Carabella. So now I will take a vote. Um, trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Swan.
In favor.
Trustee Caratao.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
Sorry, in favor. And I think my mic was off, sorry.
Trustee Murphy.
Uh, in favor.
Trustee Bambra.
In favor.
Trustee O'Hern Zernota.
Opposed.
Motion fails.